Good morning. Welcome to the land use meeting on March 8th of the Board of County Commission. And with that, I'd like to... Do we need to... We do need to do a roll call, correct, sir? Thank you very much. Please do.
Overman.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Hagan.
Here.
Kemp. Myers.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
White.
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum.
Thank you very much, sir. And with that, we'll open the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation. Commissioner White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll ask everyone to please stand at this time. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, I pray that you'll guide this board, our staff, and stakeholders this morning as we make decisions on a finite resource, and I pray that you will help us to strike that balance between the rights of the private property owner and the greater good of the community. As always, I pray for our first responders and members of our armed forces. I also pray for those in Ukraine. Pray for their well-being and pray for peace. I ask for all of these blessings in your heavenly name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. With that, we'll begin with the withdrawals, continuants, and remands. Mr. Moreta.
Point of order. Just... I just like to record my presence.
Yes. Thank you very much, Commissioner Kemp, for joining us. We'll begin with Mr. Moreta.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Development Services Department for the record. We do have some changes... We do have some changes for the record that I'll go ahead and get to those now. First one is on Agenda Page 12. Item E3 is shown on the actual page. It was distributed, but this is Item E1 on the Agenda. This is PRS 21-1037. Additional party of records have been added to the backup, and that was emailed as well as part of this addendum. Next change is found on Agenda Page 13, Item E5, Application PRS 22-0340. Additional party of records have also been added to the backup. And the final change is on Agenda Page 15, Item F4, Application RZPD 21-0745. The applicant is requesting the application be remanded to the May 16 zoning hearing, master hearing. Now moving to the Agenda itself. A1, PD 18-0996. Staff has requested the item be continued to the April 12th Board Meeting starting at 9:00 a.m. Item A2, Personal Appearance 21-1035. The application has been withdrawn by the applicant. Item A3, Personal Appearance 21-1038. The application's been withdrawn by the applicant. Item A4, Personal Appearance 21-1153. The application's being continued by staff to the April 12th Board of Commissioners Meeting starting at 9:00 a.m. Item A5, Special Use Land Excavation 21-1224. The application's being continued by the applicant as a matter of right to the April 12th Board Commissioner Meeting starting at 9:00 a.m. Item A6, Personal Appearance 22-0151. The application's being continued by the applicant as a matter of right to the April 12th Board Meeting starting at 9:00 a.m. Moving to the next page. Item A7, Personal Appearance 22-0153. The application's out of order. It's being continued to the May 10th Board of Commissioners Meeting starting at 9:00 a.m. Item A8, Personal Appearance 22-0357. The application's being continued by staff to April 12th Board Meeting starting at 9:00 a.m. Item A9, CDD 21-1210. Staff is requesting the item be continued to the April 12th Board Meeting starting at 9:00 a.m. Final change is Item A10, V21-0013. Petition's being continued to the April 12th Board Meeting starting at 9:00 a.m. Commissioners, that concludes the changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve changes?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Kemp, I believe. Okay. Please do a roll call.
Overman.
Yes.
Cohen.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent additional agenda?
So moved.
Second. Okay. So I have a motion by Commissioner White and Kemp, and a second by Commissioner Myers. Please do a roll call.
Overman.
Yes.
Cohen.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to the next part of the agenda, but I need to ask the staff to do the oath for anyone that is going to testify today to today's items.
Please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Before we begin our first public hearings this morning, I'd like to take an opportunity to remind all of our speakers, including those participating in person at Saunders Library, and those that are participating remotely, of our meeting participation process. When it is your turn to speak, I will recognize you as a speaker. For those participating in person at the Saunders Library, please adhere to the mask requirements and respect social distancing guidelines. Remain seated and do not approach the podium to speak until I've called on you. Thank you very much. And with that, we will move on to the E items. Mr. Moreta.
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us to E1 on the Agenda. This is Personal Appearance 21-1037. It's located at 7835 Gunn Highway. I'll move to the Elmo. Project is loaded... Located just north of Gunn Highway. Project is outlined in the red. And to the west is Sheldon Road. Moving to the next page. The applicant is requesting a modification to a plan development to amend a commercial shopping center to allow access to the south. The project will remain obtaining access to Gunn through the existing driveway, and they're also amending the parking area. Staff is recommending approval with changes where available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. We have an opportunity for those that would like to speak. You have three minutes per speaker, and...
Commissioners, if you...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You have the applicant presentation? My apologies. You have 15 minutes.
Commissioners David Smith, 401 East Jackson Street, Suite 2100, for the applicant. Staff's report has done a very good job of outlining this request. This request is simply a request to add cross-access from the existing shopping center to a very narrow parcel of land that was not included in the shopping center when it was originally approved. This will provide for the opportunity for when this out parcel, or we'll call it an out parcel because it's not owned by the shopping center, is developed, to provide cross-access and the opportunity to not have an additional curb cut for the parcel that fronts Gunn Highway when it's developed. It also provides for an opportunity for this shopping center to have shared parking. Again, the parcel on the front edge of Gunn Highway is also in the Citrus Park land use and zoning categories, and due to its narrow nature, when it develops, this cross-access will help it develop in a fashion that's more consistent with the Citrus Park overlay. I stand to answer any questions you may have, and reserve your time for any rebuttal.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Is there... I'm looking to see if there's any proponent on this particular item. I'm not seeing any on E1. So are there any proponents that would like to offer testimony to this? That I don't see any signed up.
No one is approaching the mic.
Okay. And I don't see any listed for opponents as well.
No one's approaching the mic and hearing either. Thank you.
Okay. Excellent. And Development Services, five minutes?
We have no comments.
No additional comments. Okay. And seeing no opponents or proponents, and the applicant, I assume we're going to waive the applicant's rebuttal? And with that, I'll entertain a discussion...
Second.
Okay. We have a motion of approval by Commissioner Kemp, a second by Commissioner Cohen. Please take a roll call vote.
Overman.
Yes.
Cohen.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Mr. Moreta.
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us up to Item E2, Special Use Land Excavation 21-1219. Project site on the overhead is located in red, US 41, immediately to the east, and Cracker Road to the south. Project, again, is a land excavation that's being proposed for restoration of habitat. They want to deal with freshwater and estering wetlands as well as coastal uplands. It's for 80,000 square feet... Eighty thou... Excuse me. 80,000 cubic yards, and staff is recommending approval with conditions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll entertain the applicant's presentation for 15 minutes.
David, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Sorry. I'm muted you now. You're good to go.
Okay. This is Dave Skedgy with DPS Corp. This project is for a land excavation project for hydrologic and habitat restoration. We're doing this work on behalf of the Southwest Water Management District. Parcel is on the west side of US 41, approximately 24-plus acres. It's currently owned by the county ELAP program. In January, the property was re-sold for agricultural use. Future land use designation is preservation, and we're requesting this to alter the site to native upland and wetland habitats. Aerial view of the site in 1968, formerly fish farm, and it is currently not operational. Current condition is basically open fish ponds that are filled with exotic vegetation. The proposed improvements are we want to create freshwater and saltwater tidal habitats. We're going to backfill the man-made fish ponds, remove the exotic vegetation. There are some old buildings on site that are in... Going to be demoed, and it's going to create a natural habitat for fish and wildlife. There's a schematic of the proposed improvements to the site. On the west side will be the saltwater tidal marsh habitat, and on the east side is freshwater. And there's also going to be an upland habitat for a butterfly mound. We're requesting a number of variances from LDC code. Wetland setbacks to zero feet. This is to allow tidal influence to the saltwater portion of the site. Also setback from US 41 right away at seven feet. That will be to the freshwater pond. Also zero-foot setback from the property boundary, and a five-foot setback from the residential properties on the south. Working conditions for the site, we're going to access the site via US 41 for our equipment and crews. Working hours are going to be 7:00 a.m. till 6:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, and we are going to place fencing at the access points and along the residential properties on the south. The fencing on the south will include some screening to block the views of the site. And those are before and after photos, hopefully. So the current conditions of the site on the left and marsh habitat restoration. And that concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have another individual that's signed up as part of the application team. That was Mary Barnwell. Would you like to use that time during your applicant presentation? Is Ms. Barnwell available?
Yes. Yes, this is Mary Barnwell with Hillsborough County ELAP Conservation and Environmental Lands Management Program, and we are basically sponsoring this project in addition to Southwest Florida Water Management District. We see great prospects for great improvement from what it currently is to what is proposed, and so obviously, we endorse the project.
Thank you very much. Are there any other applicant members that would like to present during the remaining time? You have 10 minutes. Seeing or hearing none, I'd like to move on to proponent testimony. With that, the proponents have 15 minutes to testify on behalf of this project. I have three individuals, one, two... Yep. No, actually, two individuals signed up. The first, I'll recognize Nancy Norton. Is Nancy Norton available?
Yes, I'm available.
Please proceed.
I'm Nancy Norton. I am a member of the SWM program at the Southwest Florida Water Management District.
Sorry, Nancy, will you please enable your camera? Thank you.
Our project is... Our purpose is to improve the water quality and natural habitats around Tampa Bay, and this project with the... With our partner, Hillsborough County, falls within that, and so we are a proponent of this. We have funding involved to restore this to natural systems. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There's still 14 minutes remaining, and I have another individual, Mark Sharp, but I don't see him online. Is Mark Sharp available to testify as a proponent?
I'm not seeing him online or in-person manager.
Thank you very much. Are there any other individuals that would like to offer proponent support for this particular item?
No one in person.
All right. Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to opponent testimony. I'm seeing none. Are there any opponents that would like to testify on behalf of this project?
None in the hearing room.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to Development Services. Amended recommendations, if any?
No amended recommendations. Thank you still for...
All right. Great. Thank you. I have five minutes set aside for applicant rebuttal, but seeing that I see no opponents, I'll entertain a motion to discuss...
Move approval.
Move approval. Second. I have a motion to approve by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Myers. Please take a roll call vote.
Overman.
Yes.
Cohen.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We'll move on to E3... Actually, E3? Is that... Was that one of the changes?
Yeah, we're still hearing E3.
We're still going to hear it. Okay. Great. Move on to E3. Mr. Moreta, you're recognized.
Thank you. E3 is Personal Appearance 22-0042, located at the northwest corner of West Bears Avenue and Monet Drive. This is a request to amend conditions which currently restrict the veterinary hospital from 7:00 in the morning to 10:00 p.m. It also has some site plan changes, and they're proposing to actually remove the hourly operation conditions to allow 24-hour operation. There's also a sidewalk that's existing that's located in the scenic corridor, and they're asking for relief from that requirement to allow the sidewalk to exist there. Mr. Brian Grady of our staff is going to walk you through the site plan that's proposed for this particular project and show you the changes that are being offered. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll set aside 15 minutes for the applicant. You're recognized.
Commissioner Brian Grady with Hillsborough County Staff was going to give a brief overview of the request before we heard from the applicant.
Excellent. Thank you.
Again, for the record, Brian Grady, Hillsborough County Development Services. The subject property is located on the north side of Bears Avenue, east of North Boulevard and west of North Florida, in the northwest part of the county. Surrounding uses, you have a CVS Drug Store, retail drugstore to the west, residential to the north and east, and a institutional church to the south. The property... The site is currently approved for 7,200 square feet of business, professional, office, district zoning district uses, and specified specific or special retail uses is outlined in the conditions of approval. As noted by Ms. Moreta, there is an operating hour restriction that limits operating hours from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The request is to allow for a 24-hour emergency animal hospital. The applicant has proposed a specific site plan to address specifically that use and the proposed operating hour changes would only specifically apply to the animal hospital and all the uses would be regulated in the current operating hours. To note, with respect to the specific site plan that they provided, I'll highlight a couple of items. The applicant did relocate the access point, moved it further south from where it is on the existing plan to line up with the southernmost driveway of the southernmost residential unit within the suddivision. That's the east and north. This is done to minimize potential light impacts within the neighborhood, and lining up on that driveway in the garage from that resident would help to minimize impacts of light for later hour operations and also minimize for the encroachment into the neighborhood for vehicles coming and going from the property. The applicant also, with their building orientation, is committed that the entrance to the building will be along a southern facing facade that faces Bears, so that way, activity would be focused along that portion of the property further away from the existing residential. They've also committed to soundproofing the building to minimize any potential noise impacts from barking animals within the facility. I will also note that the project, the PD, currently has existing requirements for a six-foot vegetative opaque screening along both the north and east boundaries of the property, which helps to further mitigate for potential impacts, and there's also existing conditions regarding lighting that limits the height of the light poles to also minimize potential impacts from lights. Staff did find this approval based on those proposals and provisions provided by the applicant, and I would also note the planning commission did also look at this and found it consistent. Available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grady. I appreciate that. Is the planning commission offering testimony at this point or comments at this point? They offered a recommendation for approval, but do they want to comment on that? I see Ms. Leinhardt on the line.
Good morning, Commissioners. Melissa Leinhardt, Planning Commission staff. We do not offer a formal consistency review for PRS's unless there is a perceived comprehensive plan issue. With this item, we did find it consistent, so no report was generated, but I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Excellent. Thank you very much. With that, we'll hear from the applicant.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Richard Green, and actually... I appreciate... Wait for that. My name is Richard Green. I'm an attorney with Lewis, Lemon &amp; Walker. I do represent the Veterinary Emergency Group, VEG for short, and I want to build off of what Mr. Grady was talking about here, that first and foremost, the area that we are looking to develop, and I also want to point out that Veterinary Emergency Group is the use for DOD, who's also here, and I'll introduce them shortly. They are the developer. So we do have a developer here for questions should you have them. The current use is already approved. The only request here to change before the commission is the hours of operation. There are minor modifications that would be administrated, approved, which were discussed shortly in terms of location of the driveway, length of the driveway, things of that nature. Regarding the 24-hour request, this is a request that fits the use for veterinary hospital only. For whatever reason, if VEG were not to end up using the space, it would be a florist shop or a competing drugstore, that would not be allowed to be 24 hours. We all know that emergencies do not allow us to wait for 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. This is a use that will fit the neighboring community, it will fit the neighboring residential area, and so on. Should people need to utilize these services after hours, this is pretty much one of the only places that they could go. So this is a positive use. It is also not a high-traffic time. We would not be expecting most of the emergencies to occur 10:01 p.m. to 6:59 a.m. If anything, the use would be sporadic. However, it's still a use that needs to be available should people need it. With that, this is also not attracting any sort of nuisance. And I don't want to talk down about other type of establishments, but this is not a bar where there will be alcohol sales and loud music, or attracting large numbers of people at certain times of the day when bars are typically open for use. This is not a 24-hour mart or gas station where people will be purchasing alcohol, let alone prescription drugs and things of that nature, but furthermore, it's not attracting that type of clientele at all. This is not going to have a situation where it's humans involved in terms of emergency uses. This is not an ER, not that there could be one there anyway, but this is not going to attract the light and noise pollution from an ambulance or anything of that nature. As has already been stated, the potential for light pollution has been minimized and moved away from the neighboring residential community. To that end, any intrusion, if there is any, but I do not believe there to be any, any intrusion is minimal to this area. There is no noise pollution. You'll hear shortly from VEG regarding how dogs are not kennelled at this location, so they're not going to be there overnight, barking and things of that nature. No odor pollution as everything occurs inside. Furthermore, no light pollution from driving cars and things of that nature. The area can be driven through anyway, but there's not going to be any added attractive nuisance to the area. Now, with the ready time, we do want to introduce VEG to the commission, and with me, I have Jennifer Hanlon of the Veterinary Emergency Group. With her also is Graham Tate. Should there be any questions, they will be here to answer them. In addition, we have Derek Brown with the DOD, who's going to answer some points of how the project has been modified to meet the staff requirements as well as the community requirements and community requests. Later on, we'll have Sally D., who is a community outreach expert, who's going to explain to you how VEG has reached out to the community in an effort to alleviate some of the concerns that the community may have. So with that, I am going to invite Jennifer Hanlon up to introduce VEG to the commission. Thank you.
Ms. Hanlon, you're recognized as part of the applicant team?
Yes.
You have 11 minutes left of the applicant presentation.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
You have 11 minutes left of the applicant's presentation to share with the rest of your team. Please proceed.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. My name is Jennifer Hanlon. I'm the Director of Real Estate and Development for Veterinary Emergency Group, also known as VEG. We are a nationwide group of emergency and urgent care hospitals for pets. VEG currently operates 28 locations nationwide, providing the communities that we operate in with a dedicated daytime and after-hours emergency-only service. We do not take appointments. We operate on a walk-in basis only, as I said, to provide the community with that dedicated daytime and after-hours emergency care. When you call, you can speak directly to a doctor, and you will see that exact doctor when you walk into our facility. All of our hospitals operate 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, to provide the community with a very much dedicated needed after-hours care. Something very unique about a visit to VEG is, as I mentioned, when you call, you get to speak directly to a veterinarian. They can answer all of your questions and advise on next steps and if you need to come in. on next steps, and if you need to come in. Upon your arrival, you will see that exact doctor, and you will be seen right away by a veterinarian and taken directly to the back. Something that sets us apart from pretty much any other general practice or emergency provider is that we don't separate people and their pets. Everyone comes directly to the back of the hospital, and you can stay with your pet for every step of the way, whether they're getting an X-ray, they're getting stitches, they're getting blood taken. We don't separate people and their pets, and a cornerstone of the business that we provide to the community is finding a way to say yes. If your pet is hospitalized overnight and you wanna faceTime with them, yes. If you wanna hang out in a beanbag chair next to your pet's cage, yes. We really do find a way to try to accommodate all of our customers' requests, because we are a very customer-oriented business. Additionally, we collaborate with our customers' primary veterinarians, of which we consider ourselves an extension of them. Whether they're busy during the day and they can't handle your emergency, or they are closed overnight, that is where VEG steps in. It's worth noting that VEG actually already operates in the Tampa area. We currently operate a location at two thirty-eight East Bears Ave., which is about half a mile to the east of the location that we are meeting on today. VEG has operated this location since the end of two thousand and eighteen. It's worth noting that over the past decade, this location alone has seen over a hundred and fifty thousand patients, and in the last twelve months, VEG has treated over fifteen thousand people and their pets when they needed it most. The reason we are looking to relocate this facility to the west is that this was an acquisition. When we purchased this hospital, we made zero to little changes. It was not built or designed by VEG, meaning that it's not up-to-date with the way that VEG operates or provides services, what we call the VEG way. Moving this location will provide us the ability to give our customers a better service, a more valued service, which is why we're asking that you please consider our request for the twenty-four hour variance. I'm happy to answer any additional questions at the end of this. I'm gonna hand it back over to Richard, and I will be here for the remainder. Thank you. We appreciate you hearing our request.
Thank you, Ms. Hanlon. Mr. Green, did you have Derek Brown or Sally D. online or available?
Yes, Commissioner. We do have Derek Brown here. He's gonna come up and address some of the changes that were made at the staff request, as well as to alleviate some concerns within the community.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, you're recognized.
Good morning. My name's Derek Brown. I am a construction project manager for the developer for this site, Verdade Real Estate. And just to reiterate some of the things discussed, in order to minimize impact, we've worked closely with staff, these four points here in particular, added some enhancements to the landscaping, so as to create more of a barrier between operations and residential area. We've oriented all signage for the building to face Bears Ave., so as not to be a nuisance to the surrounding neighbors. We've utilized some architectural enhancements away from the VEG proto to be more in line with the neighboring architecture and to fit the neighborhood aesthetic. And as discussed, we've also shifted the access point to mirror the neighboring driveway and create less of a nuisance for traffic, in particular, late at night. So we're working closely with staff, and we will continue to do so throughout the design and permitting process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person I heard was Sally D. Is she available?
Yes, Commissioner, but she's gonna come up during rebuttal, if we can reserve her for that time.
Okay, great. Do you have any other applicants? You have six minutes and forty-eight seconds remaining.
Thank you. And I just wanna basically close our initial presentation by stating that what you see on the screen is not VEG's final offer. They are continuing to work with staff and the community in order to make this the best area possible. But as stated, the idea here is to make a veterinary hospital that is up-to-date, state-of-the-art, and can provide the best services, not only to the surrounding community, but the neighboring community as well. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Green, I'd like to ask a question. There are several other individuals that are signed up as part of the applications team, and before we move on and follow the applicant's presentation, I'd like to list those individuals and see if they actually are gonna speak on support or as part of your rebuttal. I have, signed up to speak is Ross Claiborne, Hannah Hanny Lawrence, Artie Citron, Addie Clark, and Nathan Lee. Are they signed up as part of your applicant team or part of your proponent team?
They are signed up as part of the applicant team, and I would say that Mr. Citron is probably one of the proponents here. He will be answering any technical questions, should there be any, and the same goes for the rest of the applicant team. If there are specific questions that, you know, me as an attorney cannot answer, we will bring them up to respond to those. We just can't anticipate what those questions may be.
Understood. Rebuttal typically is for five minutes. That's why I asked. And you still have six minutes and twenty-three for the applicant, so I just wanted to clarify, to make sure it's clear.
With the remaining six minutes, if the commission does have any questions at this point, we would be more than happy to address those now in order to avoid any type of time crunch at the end.
Understood, understood. However, the next part of our presentation is for proponents' testimony. I'm only, I'm not seeing anyone who's signed up as proponent. Are there any persons online, or virtual, or in-person that would like to speak in support of this project?
Seeing none in the room.
Excellent, thank you very much. And with that, we'll move on to opponent testimony. There's fifteen minutes set aside for opponents. I have one person signed up as an opponent. That's Emmanuel Panero, I believe. Panero, is that person available?
Ma'am Chair, if I may.
Sure.
Todd Pressman, Two Hundred Second Avenue South, Number Four Fifty-One, St. Petersburg. I am here today gladly representing the residents of this neighborhood, and we'd like to ask for the fifteen minutes for myself to present a PowerPoint, and then some of the neighbors to speak, if we may, please.
Is this an opponent or proponent?
We are here, I am here representing the neighborhood and the residents in opposition to this request.
Okay, so you're part of the opponent presentation. You have fifteen minutes.
Thank you. If we could bring up the PowerPoint, please. Ma'am Chair, again, we are in opposition from the Bears Monet Community, known as Enchanted Lake Estates. Next slide, please. Twenty-four hour impacts, which is what this issue about, is parking lot activity, excessive illumination, site activities spillover, increased traffic, overflow parking, safety and security, and a precedent on twenty-four hours. Next slide, please. This is the subject property. Next slide. Enchanted Estates is two streets, twenty-three lots with twenty-one residential, single-family homes, twenty-one families with children, elderly residents that cross and walk the streets. Next slide, please. This is a few shots to orientate to the neighborhood. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. And these are homes that, as you saw, are directly across the street from the proposed vet center. Next slide, please. And next slide, please. Next slide, please. This is the C V S barrier wall and landscape buffer. Next slide, please. And again, another view of the C V S barrier wall and landscape buffer. Next slide, please. On the street, supposed to twenty-five miles an hour, the applicant had made a claim that they're not restricted, but they are. City buses are not permitted. The residents protested that, and that's been removed. School buses are not allowed in the neighborhood. Next slide, please. Our concerns. Next slide, please. The neighbor spent some time watching the use and how it worked at his current location. This is a listing of their observations through February, March, through the evening and late night, and you can see that there's significant number of cars that run up to twenty-six or twenty-eight cars at a time. Now, what's interesting here, Commissioners, is this, as the applicant said, this is not like a retail use, people come and go. People will go here. Clearly, it's a hospital. They'll wait for the doctor. If they're busy, of course, I've used a place like this before, they're gonna stay there for a long period of time. They're gonna stay there while their family member, their pet, undergoes surgery or other intensive elements. They're not gonna leave. Some people may. Some people may go in, and a husband or wife may stay in the car, but people have been seen in the cars for a long period of times, waiting for vet activity. Next slide, please. This is February fifteenth at ten P M. Next slide, please. This is February twentieth at one A M. Twenty-one cars. Next slide, please. Observations were made, of course, you're not gonna take pictures of a fellow sitting in his car while waiting, the windows down, smoking. Customers sitting in their vehicles, waiting for the windows down, listening to music. Customers walking around adjacent areas while waiting. That's multiple occasions. Customers getting out, walking their pets in adjacent areas on multiple occasions. Again, photos are not gonna be taken of these experiences that the immediate neighbors have witnessed. Next slide, please. Another element is the amount of parking has been very gray and very murky. On their plans, they note seventy-two hundred square feet, which require thirty-six parking spaces. That's been removed from the site plans. The one that you're showing today only shows, as I counted, twenty-five spaces. That would have to reduce their building to five thousand square feet. So we do not believe in any manner they're gonna be able to accommodate more than twenty-five parking spaces. Next space, next slide, please. Now, also note, Commissioners, the I T E does not have a rate for twenty-four hour, seven-day-a-week vet's office, nor do the county have rates for that, because it's a much different use when all the vet offices in the area close, and everyone goes to the hospital. You're gonna have a lumping of time and increase. I think the applicant said alone, they've had fifteen thousand clients in one year. Next slide, please. Parking lot illumination is another issue. Now, illumination has to be shielded, but when you're in a dark neighborhood, and you have a very busy business that's lit up for security reasons, that is gonna be not compatible with the neighborhood immediately and surrounding budding around the site. Next slide, please. They have an outdoor exercise area that will also be included. That will be outdoor dog activity. They also have an area throughout the back that's a landscape buffer and green area. Next slide, please. Now, we receive from the applicant these periods of time that they're busy, which seems to differ from what the gentleman before me spoke about. You can see getting in very late hours, you can see per hour that they have a lot of traffic that lumps into those late times. And again, those hours, as we understand it, and certainly they're gonna overlap, it's not just one hour in, or fifteen minutes and fifteen minutes leave. That may be some people, but we've experienced, excuse me, the neighbors have experienced people waiting in the parking lot for services or for intensive activities with the dogs to be completed. Next slide, please. And this is important, Commissioners. This is critical. This is from the applicant's or from the team members' own paperwork. Their intended activity is, quote, "Our team would be walking dogs for relief at nighttime, and this should not create any sort of noise disturbance." So we take this to clearly mean that people will be taking their dogs and walking on public streets with these neighbors, at these neighbors' homes, talking on their phone, perhaps, telling their loved one how their pets are doing, maybe listening to music, maybe having a cigarette, which is fine, but that's an element of having dogs in the neighborhood. That other dog's here, starts barking, that's an impact for the twenty-four hours. That is unacceptable. Next slide, please. There's a twenty-four hour request precedent here. The C V S, which is located directly next door to the site and a part of the neighborhood, originally proposed twenty-four hours, but as you can see from the public record, the planning commission staff and the neighbors during that neighborhood meeting objected to that, and those hours were limited. So there is a request right next door to the site, the twenty-four hours did not work, that the planning commission staff and the neighbors requested for the C V S right next door. Next slide, please. So this is where the twenty-four hours was eliminated, next to the vet site, and there's the orientation again, the immediacy of the neighborhood and the residents. Next slide, please. Now, in terms of traffic, all the southbound traffic are gonna use these local streets. So all the communities coming down to the site are gonna use these local streets for access, for entrance. Next slide, please. And the neighbors ran this through Waze and Google. That's how these directional internet devices and G P Ss are gonna run currently now, run potential customers through the site. Next slide, please. These are all the communities and others that are gonna come to the site, of course, for vet services. Next slide, please. Also, exiting to North Boulevard is extreme, or that vehicles will exit to North Boulevard, because coming through Bears is almost impossible to left. So a lot of people will come through the neighborhood to access the light. Next slide, please. This is a critical, this is another one particular critical impact. Headlights going out the driveway onto Monet. Next slide, please. At fifteen oh three and fifteen oh oh five, next slide, please, into the neighborhood on a constant basis. Fifteen thousand vehicles are customers per year, and I've showed you the frequency during the night how that occurs. Next slide, please. Looking at comprehensive plan policies sixteen point three, development redevelopment should be integrated through creational-like uses. These are not like uses. Creational complementary uses. Because of the twenty-four hour impacts, we do not believe this is a complementary use. Mitigation of adverse impacts, they've done some, but not enough, and I'll come back to that in a minute. And we showed you transportation pedestrian connections are unacceptable on Monet. Next slide, please. Policy sixteen point three, again, the mitigation of adverse impacts. The driveway's been moved, but is still on Monet, and brings those headlights and noise into the community. While vegetative buffering is added, a barrier wall was required to be compatible for C V S. Next slide, please. Transportation pedestrian connections and parking, the renderings, as we see, do not comply with the Land Development Code. Seventy-two hundred square feet requires thirty-six spaces. We do not see that on plans, nor on the plan you are shown. After-hours parking, the current site we found is more than twenty-five spaces. Where are those cars gonna park? They're gonna park in the neighborhood. People coming and going with their dogs, making noise, intrusion to the community. There is no overflow parking, and this does not accommodate for future growth of the site. Next slide, please. Compatibility is height. It doesn't match residential. Scale, no. Mass, no. Bulk, no. Pedestrian vehicle traffic, we believe, no. Circulation, we don't believe. Access and parking impacts, we've shown you are a concern. Lighting, noise, potentially odor, are elements that do not match compatibility in our policy one point four, particularly when they intend to walk dogs on a consistent basis directly in the neighborhood. Next slide, please. Per the planning commission, I'll remind you that this future land use category is Res Four, which is, the intent of the category is to provide for low-density residential, as quoted from the planning commission. Next slide, please. There are a number of residents here. We'll have a few of them speak very quickly, but we wanted to show you, we have a petition, and the petition indicates complete opposition by the immediate neighborhood. Next slide, please. So we do seek absolute denial of this P R S application, but we do wanna indicate, in terms of possible conditions, if the commission may go another direction, which is a concrete barrier wall, including, except a fence, including the vegetative buffer, is required along Monet, Monaco Drive property line, and the sole access is to be located on Bears. Next slide, please. So that, Commissioners, will have some residents speak, but I think you can sum this request up. Because of the twenty-four hours, this becomes, in our opinion, five pounds of sugar in a three-pound bag that's gonna overflow in this immediate neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, do we have any other opposition testimony?
Yes, this is Mark Rodriguez. I'm a resident.
Please proceed. You have four minutes and twenty-nine seconds left.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners, for hearing us. I don't have a fancy presentation today. What I do have is my neighbors. There are at least, I believe, a dozen here today. I'd like to introduce kind of why we're here. In the front row, Mr. David Morales just purchased the property, which is the first one that they aligned the lights on, and he did not, he was not aware of this when he bought the house, that he was gonna get into this. He intended to move here with his wife. He is currently renting the house. Next to him, we have, Cleve is here. His mom is a retired elderly woman, absolutely wonderful, out in the front yard gardening every day. If you drive by and wave, she waves back. Next to them, also, right across the street, Mike Sloan. Mike Sloan grew up in this house. Not only did he grow up in the house, he kept it. He lives in a nearby subdivision, and he rents it out and is a very, you know, proud property owner there. Next to him is Sean Hawkins. Sean, Sean and Mike grew up together. His parents live in a neighborhood a block away, and they used to play on this, this piece of property. It was their playground. I'm addressing these, and then there's Claudia, who's not here. She's a worker. This young lady is a manufacturer's rep and travels all over the place, probably works sixty, seventy hours a week. She wasn't able to be here. But a hundred percent of this neighborhood has signed this petition, and the reason is, is because it's gonna, what you decide today is gonna change our lives. It's gonna change our neighborhood, not for five days, or ten days, or ten weeks, or ten months, but for over ten years. So what you do today is going to affect twenty-one families. Now, at the last hour, they hired a Now, at the last hour, they hired a public relations person under the auspices of telling us what a great veterinary service it is. And guess what? We know it. Four or five of us have used them, and we have absolutely no problem at all with a business going in there. I'm a small businessman. I've owned several small businesses, and there are a number of people in the neighborhood that also own businesses. We have no problem whatsoever with that. What we do have a problem with is this neighborhood changing due to additional traffic, safety and security issues, and the fact that it's 24 hours. It's going to, I'm sure that none of you have a house where you walk out the front door to go for a walk in the evening, or to look at the stars, or to walk your dog, and you're going to see a 35-foot lit building and parking lot across the street. We don't want that either. And here you have a diverse community from many different backgrounds and many different lifestyles, and we have a healthy community and a healthy neighborhood. And I think that's what the whole planning commission and the whole zoning commission is about, is having reasonable places for people to live and to have a healthy community. So the reason we're here and so strongly opposing this is because it will destroy our healthy community and our healthy neighborhood. And I'd like to leave you with one question, and that's, what would you do just in case you wanted to do the right thing? Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Can you stop the clock, please? I believe there is a Emmanuel Panero that's on virtually, and there's 40 seconds left, Mr. Sir, Mr. Panero. Is that, is that correct? Communications, can you?
Sorry, I'm mute.
There you go. Now we can hear you, sir.
Hello, I am Lisa Wilkerson. I have lived in this neighborhood for 17 years with my family. My mother-in-law is 88 years old and walks with a walker in the neighborhood, very slowly. As Mark said, we are not anti-business, but we are concerned about the fit of this business in our neighborhood. And honestly, it just does not fit because all these concerns that were brought up, we get no relief from them. 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, we will have this intrusion in our lives forever. And it's just devastating to even think about that.
Ma'am, your time's up.
It's just devastating to think about all these intrusions for the rest of our lives. And it will only get worse because their business will only grow. And they are the only after-hours business in our area.
Ma'am, ma'am, your time is up.
How many veterinarians do you know of that are in a residential area? Zero.
Communications, could you assist me, please? We actually did recognize Mr. Emmanuel. Is it possible we can give him 10, 15 seconds, since I did actually call his name, but communications brought someone else online? Is the board okay with that? I did recognize him.
I would, I would suggest, Madam Chair, give him the 40 seconds.
The 40 seconds that he had. Is it possible that we can do that, clerk? Thank you. Communications, can you recognize and open the mute for Mr. Emmanuel, please?
Any are muted.
Okay, great. Thank you. I concur with my neighbors on what this project is going to do to our community. It's going to definitely change our quality of life. I got a little teary-eyed there when Mark was speaking because it's true. This is a long-term effect for us. So it's in your hands to do the right thing for us here today.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, let's move on, if you don't mind, please, to development services amended recommendations. Five minutes, please, if there's any.
No further comments from staff.
Excellent. And with that, I'll open it up to comments, and I see Commissioner Hagan has his hand raised. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm chair.
Back to the applicant.
Oh, back to the applicant for rebuttal. I apologize. You missed that line. Excellent. Is the applicant has five minutes to offer a rebuttal.
Commissioner, just one question of, I guess, decorum. We had, I think, five and a half minutes from our presentation in the application. Were we able to reserve those minutes for rebuttal?
No, you're not able to. That's why I mentioned earlier, if you had other applicants that needed to speak, that that was when it needed to occur, that was the 15 minutes that you had before, but you have five minutes.
All right. Hi, I'm Sally D. Good morning, everybody. I'll try to talk fast, then. I was brought in to do community outreach, because obviously I live in this community and care about this, you know, care about Tampa very much. I did outreach to several local businesses in which you have letters of support. I would like to point out Clara Reynolds' letter of the Crisis Center, which operates just down the street 24/7, and she lives next to Blue Pearl and says in her letter that it really has no impact. She loves Blue Pearl, on her life and her quality of life. We did, I went around to the neighborhood and passed out flyers. We hosted a Zoom meeting, answered all their questions in a letter, and I think we had three letters of support come in, and that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other applicants or, I mean, that would like to offer testimony?
Yes, counsel, just want to address some of the points that were made. The first one is to remind that-
Who's speaking? I'm sorry. Who's speaking? I can't see you.
My name is Richard Green.
Okay, please proceed. Sorry. Go ahead.
Absolutely. Some of the points that were brought up during the opposition testimony. The first and foremost, this is a prior approved use up to 7,200 square feet. The building that's going to be put in place is about 5,000 square feet. So there is adequate parking allowed, and of course, we would work with staff to make sure that it meets that particular code. The second piece regarding dog walking, no dogs will be, no animals whatsoever will be taken off-site to do anything. This is a business, and it would be kept on-site. There is a particular area for that. Also regarding the lighting component, this is something that VEG's understanding of, that Verda's understanding of, and the idea is to angle the lighting out to Bear's Avenue, not towards the residence. So most of the issues that were raised ignore the idea that there's going to be a commercial business, commercial enterprise put in on that location. There is no anticipation, even from the slide that was put up, that traffic is going to increase after 10:00 P. M. The slide clearly showed that the traffic is actually, that's one of the slower times. Moreover, this is not an attempt to discredit or put anything on to the residents who took pictures of the area, but the current location that VEG is in is not isolated to VEG. It is a strip mall. Therefore, there are many businesses there, the uses there, people being there, it's unknown, but those, many of those cars that you saw there were not VEG customers. Now, I understand that we can't take a roll call of who was out in the parking lot at those times, but the idea is, the point is, VEG is looking to create a state-of-the-art facility in order to service the customers of the area, including the neighborhood residential community. The idea of moving to 24 hours is strictly for emergencies. Again, this is not, you can't set an appointment for 4:00 A. M. This is going to be people who are in need of the service by VEG in order to take care of their pets. So again, if the, if the commission has any questions that we can address, we would, we would be more than happy to do so.
Thank you. You have 1 minute and 50 seconds left. Is there anyone else that would like to speak as part of the applicant team?
No, commissioner, that's all. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Sorry. With that, I'll open it up to the board. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'll keep my remarks brief. I live about probably a mile and a half from this, from this neighborhood and from this lot. I drive by it probably four times a day, so I'm intimately familiar with, with the neighborhood there. It isn't a developed lot. You know, I will say that VEG has provided a beautiful design, and in all, in all honesty, you know, with two dogs, I would, I would likely be a client there at some point. They have made several, attempted to make several conditions to mitigate the impact. I know there's support from the Presbyterian Church, the Trinity Church across the street, and from, and from the Crisis Center, but both of those are on the other side of Bears, and Crisis Center is about a quarter mile down the street. They do have development rights, so something will go at this partial at some point, and it's clear, the neighborhood knows that and realizes that. However, similar to the C V S, I have significant concerns with the impact of a 24-hour business so close to the existing neighborhood for lighting, traffic, compatibility concerns. I do believe it would be a significant intrusion and negatively impact the neighborhood, and I got to tell you, 100% neighborhood opposition says it all. We frequently get opposition from, you know, from neighbors on a project on infill development, but I don't know if I've ever seen 100% in opposition. So for all those reasons, I'm going to move denial.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hagan, a second by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you, and I want to also thank the neighbors for showing up today and making your case clear. Excuse me. I know it's not easy to come to County Center and, and to formulate your case ahead of time and try to work things out. And, and I just wanted to say, I know that we all appreciate your effort to make sure that your community grows and develops in a way that is compatible with your, with your neighborhood. I appreciate that the neighbors are not asking for nothing. They're not even asking to stop this particular business. They're just asking to make sure that it doesn't turn into something that is operating all night, at all hours, even through the weekends. And, and I think that's fair for the, for the very same reasons that the planning commission objected to the 24-hour C V S, which is adjacent to this, but farther away from the neighbors, from the homes, and it's, and it's on the busier streets of North Boulevard and Bears. So I think those, the same standard at least should be applied here closer, closer to the neighbors. Let me ask a question of staff. The neighbors were recording people kind of hanging out here, smoking a joint, walking their dogs, playing music at all hours of the night. Is this business operating contrary to code?
Commissioner, I believe that that, those, the monitoring of the parking lot was done at the current location for the vet clinic, which is further to the east.
I see. I see. Thank you. But I certainly, I, I mean, I think they've made a very clear case. I think their representative has made a very clear case in the presentation about why this doesn't, is not compatible with the neighborhood, the lighting at night as well as people hanging out. The other difference between this and the C V S is if a C V S was to operate 24/7, people just pull in, go in, buy something and leave. But as they really demonstrated very clearly, that's not how this 24-hour operation would work. People would be hanging out for a couple of hours with nothing to do but, you know, entertain themselves somehow at 2:00 in the morning in their, this people's neighborhood. So, you know, I feel strongly that the neighbors have made their case, and this is not a good, good fit, and happy to support Commissioner Hagan's motion for denial.
Thank you. Are there any other comments before I comment? Seeing none. I would like to ask, just make a couple of comments on this and then ask a question of staff. I've actually been to the location that they are currently operating. My cat got attacked by a dog, and she did not survive, and they were absolutely very, very helpful, and it was a good place. But it was, it was at like 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock in the afternoon. The parking lot they're in is literally maybe a block or two off of 275. So, and in a strip mall where there's lots of other businesses in that area. So it's a very different environment than what is being proposed at this location. My question is, how is it that a business that is being opposed because of the side street, you know, entrance, is not able to make a recommendation to access the business that would protect the neighborhood from Beers? Because I frequently, even in the city of Tampa, when a business is being developed, we tend to discount what the neighborhood impact is and require access in the community rather than on a main road in order to avoid impacting the community, and it does adversely impact the community. If this business were, with all the barriers and the setback and the birmingham and the various different landscape design protection from the community, were to access Beers, wouldn't that address many of the neighbors' concerns and allow this business to operate, whether it operates 24 hours or not? Is there, was it required by development services and by the transportation plan for them to access a community street versus Beers?
Commissioner, the current access for the P D is off of Monet Drive for the existing P D, so we looked at that as the starting point for access. Given the short frontage on Beers and the proximity to Monet, we felt that access from Monet, generally in the same location where it was proposed, a little bit further south, was appropriate. If, if there's a desire to look at how access from Beers could be accommodated, we would certainly do that, but we, we did orient our access review towards Monet because of the spacing issues on Beers.
Okay. So thank you very much for that, and that's why I asked the question. We tend to not allow businesses to access a major road, and so we default to putting it in the community, which causes the community frequently a problem. As the neighbors have recommended or observed, that they are concerned about the streets and the headlights in the evenings, you know, shining into their houses because of access from a residential street when there is potential access from a commercial street. But we've defaulted to putting it in the neighborhood. So my question is, is, you know, with the denial, is it, does it just, does that option eliminate an opportunity to have a business that, you know, oftentimes does well for a community to have a veterinary clinic, but to potentially offer an opportunity for that business to be able to not be a nuisance to the community?
So if this application were denied today, there would be a one-year time limit for them to reapply. However, the code does make some recognition for if changes are made to the project that addresses the reasons for the denial, it can be considered within, within less than a year from the initial denial. As I hear the discussion here, it seems that access to that local road and bringing that traffic into the neighborhood is something that is, that is part of the basis for denial. So if the applicant were to repropose something without that element, I believe it would fit within the, within the code parameters that would allow us to move it forward with, in less than one year.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for that answer. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Just to be clear, I would be objecting to this if it were brought back. I see no reason why I wouldn't. I mean, one of the major reasons I'm objecting today is the 24-hour operation. So, of a, of a veterinary clinic, which, as I said, I think is even more of an impact than a 24-hour C V S or other retail use here.
And Madam Chair, if I may, with that clarification, if that's, if that's an element of the board's denial, I think that that, that does change the answer I just gave.
Understood. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
And just as a lesson, I just wanted to, I'm also, you know, going to vote to deny, but, and the 24-hour is also important. But one thing I noticed and I heard, you know, lots of complaints, rightly so, about lighting, and I have my issues with lighting. Quite often, we always seem to- Quite often, we always seem to think that everybody wants the brightest, biggest lights ever anywhere. So I was wondering, even when I saw the renderings, and we heard that the lights would be shielded. I have particular problems with the height of lights, and I just don't even understand what our code requires or, like, in that particular situation, it seemed to me not only shielded but lowered. I mean, it's not like we're accommodating truck traffic, you know, hundreds of feet out. So in the same spirit of asking about whether we required kind of the entryway onto the community street, I also was curious when I see these tall, bright lights and our requirements with regards in a situation like that, because to me, it would just seem like in a parking lot like that, you would just want low, you know, very, you know, I don't know what the standard height would be, maybe 10 feet or something like that, that were kind of what you might expect for quality lighting in a neighborhood. So I'm just curious about our requirements vis a vis the lighting.
So Commissioner, there are two requirements that come into play, one of which is that the lighting be shielded, and that helps focus the light to the intended area. But we also have a measurement that we apply to any non-residential or multifamily project where we measure the light is required to maintain a limit of two-foot candles at the project boundary unless it's adjacent to residentially zoned or developed property, in which case it's a one-foot candle standard. So the height of the poles and the light poles notwithstanding, that one or two-foot candles at the property boundary will still be a requirement. So if they build a taller pole, and it provides for greater intensity of light spread, that will have to be controlled to meet that one- or two-foot candle limit, in this case, be two-foot candles.
I guess I wouldn't, you know, at all be able to translate the one- and two-foot candle requirements in terms of the height, but the height is what concerns me, and it would seem like that would, might incentivize higher poles, fewer higher poles as part of a project, rather than more costly to put in more, but lower poles. So I'm just, that's interesting. I just thought I'd ask about it. It might be something that we could look at in the future, because it just strikes me as being contrary to good design and neighborhood accommodations, and just kind of how we should move in the future.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I'm not seeing any other comments. The one thing I did want to say is that if they were to somehow get agreement of the community of 24-hour service and recognizing that there wouldn't be any other traffic coming into the location, whereas that's not the case in a strip mall right off of 275, you know, that may be a way to actually solve the problem. If Beers becomes the access, and it's the only location that that entrance is serving. But with that, I will, seeing no other comment, take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to item E4, I believe, and Mr. Moreta?
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us to item E4, personal appearance 22-0243. It takes us to the area, project backs up to I-75. It's just located between State Road 674 in this area and 19th Avenue. More specifically, project takes access off of Cypress Village Boulevard. I-75 again is to the rear. This is R2 area of the site plan. It's designated as an R2 pod. It currently allows for research, corporate park, office, commercial, vast array of non-residential uses. The applicant is asking for a home brewing business and microbrewery. It will all be limited to the indoor area of the building. They're also going to have classes. They're going to sell equipment related to the brewing and have sampling of the product as well. Staff has reviewed this, and we are recommending approval with conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. And there's no other staff presentation, assuming we'll move on to the applicant presentation. You have 15 minutes set aside. Is the applicant present?
Yes, they're approaching.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Amy Peters with AD Engineering, and I'm here with the applicant, Mr. Aaron Schmucks Lee. We wanted to actually do this PD modification because he has actually invented a home brewing equipment that he wants to actually sell to the community. That's why we're calling it a home brewing neighborhood business, so to speak. Before we even applied for the PD modification, we went to the HOA at the community, and they stated that they had no rejection at all to have this business open. So at this point, with the staff approval, we feel that it's something that he's always wanted to do, and he is actually here if you have any questions for us.
Thank you, ma'am. Would he like to speak? If so, he'll need to approach the podium.
Any questions?
No, we don't have questions at this point.
Okay.
Is he coming up? Does the applicant wish to use the remaining 14 minutes of your time?
No, that's about it.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will move on to proponent testimony. Are there any proponents in the audience that would like to speak or online? I don't see any signed up.
No one in the audience.
Thank you. Any opponents? I don't see any signed up.
No one in the audience.
Excellent. Thank you. Is there five minutes set aside for Development Services?
No further comments.
Excellent. Thank you. And seeing no opponents, I'm assuming the applicant is fine with the no rebuttal offered at this point. So with that, I'll take a motion.
Move approval.
Move approval by Commissioner Cohen.
Second.
Second by everybody else. All right. Second by Commissioner Kemp, Myers, and Smith, and White. Please take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to E5. Mr. Moreta?
Thank you. E5 is personal appearance 22-0340. Subject site is located in red on the overhead. It's just south of Luther Lake Fern, and it is east of Gunn Highway. Project takes access off of Still Lakes Drive. Commissioners, this is a planned development. It's approved for 48 lots. The applicant's proposing to add one lot into a subdivision configuration outlined in red here. There is an amenity center located in this portion of the site. They're proposing to keep the open area and the tennis court. That area will remain, and then they'll provide one single-family unit via subdivided lot. This area will be subdivided, and then they will, then help the one unit. Staff is recommending approval with conditions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other staff presentation? If not, we'll move on to the applicant's presentation. We have 15 minutes. I have several individuals signed up for E5 as part of the applicant team. Elise Batzel, Toby Arnhaim, and just those two individuals.
That may be F5.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're correct. I'm sorry. Go right ahead for the applicant.
Good morning, Commissioners. Colin Rice, law firm at Shoemaker, Loop and Kendrick, 101 East Kennedy Boulevard, Suite 2800. Here on behalf of the applicant, Stillwater Property Owners Association, we have with us Rob Williams online with the association, who is available should any questions arise. Brief presentation today. Can we see this?
We can see it now, sir.
Okay, thank you. So the specific address is 7799 Still Lakes Drive in Odessa. And functionally, this is a change of use, is the way to think about it. We're requesting to add one single-family entitlement to PD 970069, bringing the total from 48 to 49. What exists there now is an underutilized and undermaintained clubhouse that would be much better served with the family taking ownership and responsibility of this structure. The lot would be split, as Mr. Moreta alluded, to preserve the community amenity of the tennis court and then have the separately-owned newly-created Lot 49. To orient you, our site is up in unincorporated northwest Hillsborough County. It is west of Lutz, north of Keystone Lake. So we have here an aerial of the existing clubhouse. You can see the pool deck area here, the community tennis court, a community parking lot, and the clubhouse structure. To the rear is an expanse of wetland conservation area, which will remain absolutely as-is and untouched. Any proposed improvements, either for land development code purposes or for association purposes, would all happen away from the sweatlands area. So, and that's in keeping with the Keystone Odessa Community Plan, which emphasizes preserving wetland natural areas and the rural residential character of this part of the county, and of course, protection of water resources. This will all remain untouched. A more direct overhead that I'm showing you because it will match the proposed revision to the site plan, we'll have a new property line come somewhere in here so that, again, we separate out the tennis court and the existing structure. And here's the proposed revision to the site plan, creating new Lot 49, preserving the community amenities here as well. It's livable now for a family. It probably would take a little bit of work. It's just designed to be a community clubhouse. For example, there's a men's and women's restroom. Any improvements would be relatively minor in scope, certainly less than developing a new structure. Of course, all development permits and HOA rules would be complied with. So, and again, there are many lots of this new size between 1, 1 1/2 acres. It's consistent with the existing development. Really, very, very little will change out here, just a couple of tweaks to make it suitable for a single family. And it's just a much better use for this community. Most of the homes are situated in such a way that a community center, a recreation center like this, is not the highest and best use for this community. And then the maintenance issues would be incumbent upon the new family that live there. It seems like a win-win for everybody. Again, Rob Williams is available for questions. I'm available for questions. With that, I will conclude and respectfully request your approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have proponent testimony available. Is there anyone that's signed up? I see one person, Vincent Fetchel?
We aren't seeing him online.
He's not online, and he's not in the room at the Land Library?
No one in the hearing room is approaching the mic.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. Seeing no proponent, I assume there's no opponent testimony as well?
In the hearing room, no one's approaching the mic.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Development Services, any recommendations?
No.
Okay, and so I'm assuming we don't need rebuttal. At this point, I'll open it up for board discussion. Seeing none, move approval from Commissioner Smith. Second by Commissioner Myers. Please take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We'll move on to E6. Mr. Moreta?
Thank you. This brings us to item E6, personal appearance 22-0361. I'll draw your attention to the overhead. The project has frontage on Fletcher Avenue. This is the Hillell School. It is located west of Rome Avenue. The proposal is for a 4,000-square-foot additional building area for a multipurpose building and classroom. There's no additional student count. The proposal is limited to the increase in building square footage, but again, not to add additional students. Staff has reviewed this, and we are recommending approval with conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. And is the applicant approaching?
I'm here, Madam Chair. Thank you. For the record, Michael Warner, 14502 North Dale Mayberry Highway, representing Hillell School of Tampa. With me this morning is Allison Oak, school director. I'll be very brief, Commissioners. As Joe mentioned, this is simply a request to allow an expansion of one multipurpose building. This is centrally located on this tract, which is almost 10 acres. It is asking for only 4,000 square feet. We have two buildings approved, each for 10,000 square feet, for a total of 20,000 square feet. We are seeking to add 4,000 for multipurpose and a gymnasium. I'm not aware of any opposition, not aware of any objections. Again, this is not increasing any of the maximum entitlements. We have no increase in the school capacity, the number of students. We have no waivers, no PD variations, and again, I'm not aware of any objections. Thank you very much. We appreciate your support, board members. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do you have anyone else in your applicant team that would like to testify? You have 13 minutes.
Not at this time, Madam Chair.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I don't have anyone signed up for proponent or opponent testimony. Is there anyone present?
No one's approaching the mic at this time.
Okay, excellent. Any comments from Development Services?
No additional comments.
All right. Assuming we do not need a rebuttal, given there's no other comments, what's the board's pleasure?
Move approval.
Second.
Have approval by Commissioner Cohen, a second by Commissioner Smith and Kemp, I think, or Myers. Myers, thank you. Please take a roll call.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We'll move on to E7. Mr. Moreta?
Thank you. This brings us to E7. This is CDD 22-0166, a petition to expand the Hawkstone Community Development District. Mr. Brian Grady of our staff will make a brief presentation. Thank you.
Oh, I meant to make an announcement that this is a public hearing and request anyone who would like to speak and make sure that they are sworn in, if there's anyone that has not been sworn in yet. Seeing our hearing, no one needing to be sworn in. Please proceed.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brian Grady, Hillsborough County Development Services. CDD 22-166 is a petition to expand the boundaries of the Hawkstone Community Development District. The petition has been submitted by the Hawkstone CDD to modify the boundaries of the Hawkstone Community Development District. The CDD is adding approximately 175.44 acres. The modified CDD boundary would encompass 546.89 acres, and is generally located southeast and west of the intersection of Boyett Road and Baum. No objections to the proposed CDD raised by reviewing agencies. Staff finds the option meets the requirements of Chapter 190 Florida Statute to expand the boundaries of the community development district and recommends approval. Available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have two individuals signed up to speak to this matter, which both indicate that they are part of the applicant team, first being Dana Crosby Collier and the second being Christopher O'Kelly. Are either of them present?
This is Christopher O'Kelly. I'm here to speak, really just to answer any questions regarding the community development district expansion.
Okay, excellent. You do have three minutes if you wish. Dana Crosby Collier available?
Yes, ma'am. I'm here at the library.
All right, you have three minutes if you prefer.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here this morning. My name is Dana Crosby Collier. I'm the attorney for the Hawkstone Community Development District, the applicant and the expansion. On behalf of the team, we are asking that you help us with the processing, and I'm sorry, I'm sorry. On behalf of the applicant's team, thank you to staff for their On behalf of the applicant's team, thank you to staff for their assistance in processing this petition for expansion. We're in agreement with staff's recommendation that the Board grant the petition and amend the ordinance to expand the boundaries. We have several members of the applicant's team here to answer any questions, and we reserve time for rebuttal if necessary and request your approval of this expansion.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Any other speakers that would like to speak on this item at the moment? Not seeing any, and with that, I'll move on to ask for a motion or discussion. Motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Cohen. Please take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We are now at Section F, which is a public meeting limited to the zoning record where, at the regular agenda. Mr. Moreta, would you like to proceed? With item F1.
Yes, ma'am. This brings us to item F1. This is rezoning for Plan Development 21-0110, located at 11216 McMullen Road. Ms. Michelle Heinrich of our staff, who's the case planner, will take you through the remand, compare and contrast what's going on with this case since it was remanded, taking us up to our recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Michelle Heinrich, Development Services. As you are aware, the applicant did request a remand of this request back to the ZHM, which was completed. At that remand, the applicant requested a 12-bed community residential home, which is called a Type B community residential home, utilizing an existing structure of 3,421 square feet with a proposed addition of 560, sorry, 5,668 square feet, resulting in a two-story building that combined would be 9,089 square feet. The site is one acre in size and Zone RSC II and currently operates as a Type A community residential home, which are those which provide six or fewer beds. Also, the site is located in the Res 4 future land use category and is within the Riverview Community Plan area. In the Residential 4 future land use category, a maximum density of 20 beds can be considered as one dwelling unit equates to five beds for density calculation purposes. Type B community residential homes are not permitted in single-family zoning districts and require a special use permit in our agricultural, multifamily office, and commercial zoning districts. Therefore, a PD rezoning to specifically permit a Type B community residential home for this property when it is currently Zone RSC II is necessary. Distance requirements are applicable to Type B community residential homes, which include 1,200 feet from any other Type D or C community residential home and 500 feet to any RSC zoning district. A waiver to the 500-foot distance requirement is requested. RSC zoning is present to the immediate north, east, and south, and all are developed with single-family residences. To the north, a waiver of 472.5 feet is requested. To the east, a waiver of 351.7 feet is requested. And to the south, a waiver of 462 feet is requested. Unlike a Type A community residential home, Type B community residential homes, due to their size and need for facility staff, is not regulated by the code as a single-family use. Therefore, sensitivity to locating these uses within single-family residential areas is necessary and is the prime reason for the code's distance requirements. The applicant's waiver requests are significant with no intervening use or features to mitigate for the proximity between the facility and the existing single-family homes. Therefore, staff does not recommend approval of this request. I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. We're going to move to the applicant oral argument, which is set aside 10 minutes for the applicant. Is the applicant present?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Todd Pressman, 202nd Avenue South, Number 200 St. Petersburg, Florida. This is 21-0110 revised. Next slide, please. Located in the Riverview area. Next slide, please. Little closer view. Next slide, please. I'm representing Angel TCH, an existing Type A ALF for six, has a six-bed ALF for four years. They're a senior living provider with four other ALS with a nine-year history. Mr. Scott, who is the owner, is a disabled marine wife, has a master's in health administration. We are seeking expansion to 12 beds under the PD. This is very revised from a higher number previously. Next slide, please. This is an aerial of the location on McMullen Road. Next slide, please. So revised issue at one acre, at RSC II to a PD. We originally were asking 19 beds. We have reduced it to 12, which takes it to a Type B facility. Next slide, please. So it was, we have reduced it from 9,421 square feet to 9,089 square feet and changed the access point. Next slide, please. Planning Commission does say that we need to have housing opportunities for all income groups, but they note that this would support the visions of the Riverview and South Shore community plans. Next slide, please. Zoning map? Next slide, please. Future land use category. Planning Commission, typical allowable uses in this category include residential, suburban uses, neighborhood, commercial, office uses, and multipurpose projects. Next slide, please. This is a view of the home as exists, which is a six-bed ALF. You can see it's very residential architecture and mends with the community beautifully. Next slide, please. So the expansion will carry through these colors, the architecture, the design, features that are existing on both the sides and the front will be taken through the expansion. Next slide, please. Which include the roof features, window design, colors, the humps and bumps of the structure, and stays two stories. Next slide, please. This is a site plan of what's proposed. Next slide. This is the existing residence area. Next slide, please. This would be the expansion of the proposed residences. Next slide, please. In the center would be a courtyard as an amenity for residents. Next slide, please. We have made a lot of changes on the access point to bring transportation into a much more comfortable position. Next slide, please. Very low trips are obviously proposed as dominus per the county traffic engineer, 31 trips per day, 2 AMP, 3 PMP. Next slide, please. Looking at comprehensive plans under the Housing Element Policy 1.4.3, sites for group homes or foster care facilities will be approved in areas with residential character to meet needs that the population requires such housing. This is an issue of where are we going to keep our moms and dads, our grandmothers and grandfathers? We want to keep them in the community, not at an institution on major roadways. It's to bring them in the community. And actually, a couple of the residents were from this community, which is a blessing to the families who have their loved ones right there. They can visit them every day and they feel as if they're part of the community. Next slide, please. Housing element issue. Hillsborough County has established comprehensive policies and zoning processes to allow group homes in certain residential areas and areas of residential character. Next slide, please. Goal number two of the Housing Element is promote and assist the provision of ample housing supply within a broad range of types and price levels to meet current and projected housing needs, so that all Hillsborough County residents have the opportunity to purchase or rent housing. Next slide, please. Use is extremely non-impacting. It's not a large lot. There's no exterior activity. There's no parties or disco parties going on. There's no pool. It's low trips. It's fenced. There's a lot, there is a lot of distance separation, and the home expansion will maintain a strong residential character. There is, in the rear, a lot of natural bluffing. Next slide, please. Now, we have heard from a representative from the HOA, to my memory and thought and understanding, we have not heard from any adjacent property owners, but from the subdivision as a whole, we don't see any possible site impacts per its location for the subdivision. Next slide, please. So I have reached out a number of times to meet with the HOA. They did not want to meet. They did not want to discuss it. But again, because of its locational elements where the star is on the main road, we don't see that it has any impact with the subdivision. Next slide, please. And we have the test of time here, Commissioners. This site is operated with six beds without a single complaint or concern we're aware of until this application. Next slide, please. So the push from the state and federal levels, as you know, is to move these from warehousing from sterile, commercial areas to be a part of the community, and Angel's has cared as a set for two families in the subdivision, six other families in close proximity. Next slide, please. Meets all, right now meets all setbacks and requirements of the RSC II. And interestingly enough, hypothetically, next slide, please. With the proposed expansion to the rear, it doesn't impose onto the sides, same height, same equivalence. Next slide, please. In terms of density, in terms of max and capacity, hypothetically, there could be two homes here, which would be very similar, perhaps even more impacting than what we're proposing here. Next slide, please. Zoning staff concerns there is appropriateness and intensity, 500-foot separation for the use. We believe because of the use, there are no noise impacts, no odor impacts, no daily impacts with low trips that that is overcome. Next slide, please. Planning Commission refers to supporting the visions of the Riverview and South Shore community plans and that residential support uses should be compatible with surrounding land uses, which we believe we are. Next slide, please. In summary, the community plan supported, carries residential character, it's a small increase. Comp plan supported. We have the test of time. And I'd like to note in regard to the ZHM report that the hearing officer, as far as I read, gave us very little response, not a, that's not a criticism, but she did not recognize the site is supported by the community plans in terms of a number of policies, did not recognize that the structure would remain residential style appearance. She did not recognize that extremely low trips are created by the application and that there are extremely low impacts by the basis of the use. And the ZHM did not include consideration of other comp plan policies I made you aware of, and that similar-sized footprints are allowable by code as a residential home. And as far as we understand, there has been no direct residential opposition from any residence nearby to the location. So with that, with that information and with the reduction that we made to 12 beds, we appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we can offer oral arguments by proponents or opponents. Party of records, are there any proponents that would like to offer testimony that have previously testified at the, as a party of record?
None approaching the mic. Thank you.
Excellent. Are there any online? I don't see any at the moment.
We have none signed up.
Okay. Any opponents?
We have no one approaching the microphone. Thank you.
And given that they have no proponents or opponents, I'm assuming the applicant will waive their time for a rebuttal?
You waive your time.
I don't think I'll use it, but if I may, reserve it, please. Thank you.
After the planning commission? Is that what you're asking? Is that, is he asking for rebuttal after the planning commission and the county attorney presentation?
If I may speak, Madam Chair. If I may speak of the planning commission, thank you.
Okay. Is that preventable?
That's, it's not required. It would be at the Board's pleasure.
Okay. Well, let's, given that he doesn't have it to offer it at the moment, I'd like to ask the planning commission for your five-minute presentation.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Melissa Leinhart, for the record, planning commission staff. The subject property is located within the Residential 4 future land use category. The site is in the urban service area and also located within the limits of the Riverview Community Plan and the South Shore Area-Wide Systems Plan. Per Future Land Use Element Policy 9.2, developments must meet or exceed the requirements of all land development regulations as established and adopted by Hillsborough County. The application does not meet the Land Development Code requirement of a distance of 500 feet from any area of non-agricultural or RSC single-family zoning for the intensity of this community residential home. In addition, Future Land Use Element Policy 1.4 states that compatibility does not mean the same as, but maintaining the character of existing development, including intensity elements of height, scale, mass, and bulk. Meeting the Land Development Code requirement ensures compatibility between the proposed community residential home and the surrounding single-family residential dwellings. This application is not consistent with Future Land Use Element Policy 9.2, as the applicant does not meet the section of the Land Development Code. Per Policy 17.1 of the Future Land Use Element, residential support uses must be compatible with the surrounding land uses and zoning for the design, intensity, and scale. A community residential home qualifies as a residential support use. In order to meet the desired intensity for the Land Development Code, all community residential homes must be at least a distance of 500 feet away from any non-agricultural single-family zoning. The proposed 12-bed community residential home does not meet this requirement. And based upon those considerations, planning commission staff finds the proposed plan development inconsistent with the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Zoning hearing recommendation summary?
The zoning hearing master considered the proposed rezoning of the subject property, which is currently zoned RSC II, developed with a 3,000, approximately 3,421 square-foot two-story, single-family home, currently being operated as a six-bed Type A community residential home. The subject property is located within the Riverview community and is designated Residential 4 on the future land use map. The applicant is proposing an expansion of the single-family home for use as a Type B community residential home with a maximum of 12 place residents. Section 6.11.28 of the LDC provides that community residential home facilities housing six or fewer residents are deemed a single-family unit and non-commercial residential use. If expanded to accommodate 12 place residents, the subject property would not be deemed a single-family unit and non-commercial residential use under LDC. Section 6.11.28. The applicant's requested rezoning is to rezone the property to plan development to allow the expansion of the square, 3,421-square-foot home by 5,668 square feet to result in over 9,000-square-foot, two-story, Type B community residential home facility with 12 beds. The applicant is requesting waivers of the requirement for separation from RSC-zoned properties, including a waiver of just over 472 feet to the north, 462 feet to the south, and 351 approximately feet to the east. The requested waivers from the RSC-zoned properties are for significant distances, and the hearing officer found that there are no intervening uses or natural barriers such as roadways or environmental features between the property and the adjacent single-family residential uses, excuse me, to the north, east, and south. The zoning hearing master noted that county staff found the proposed rezoning to be incompatible with the adjacent residential uses and that, as you've heard, planning commission staff has found the proposed rezoning to not meet all LDC regulations as required by the comprehensive plan, therefore concluding that the rezoning request is not consistent with the comprehensive plan. Following the zoning hearing master hearing, the zoning hearing master's recommendation was for denial of the rezoning request.
Thank you. Board discussion. Commissioner, yeah, he came out of the queue. Commissioner White withdrew. Commissioner Smith, you recognized?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions of staff. Well, first of all, let me ask Planning Commission. The applicant showed that there could be an entire second building on the lot, which would double the use on this lot. I mean, is that something that is taken into consideration, is kind of site-specific rather than just looking at, you know, the legal restrictions of what the codes are around
For the record, Melissa Leinhart, planning commission staff. Thank you, Commissioner Smith. That's a good question. We did discuss that and take a look at it, but ultimately, without meeting that separation in the code and taking the lead from development services staff and discussions with them, ultimately, we ultimately, we could not find the item consistent, based on our language and Future Land Use Element 9.2, which very specifically talks about adherence to land development codes, other technical manuals, and things to that nature.
Thank you. And, maybe this is for Development Services staff, the plan was to just enlarge the building only to the rear with no additional height, or evidence at the street that this scale had doubled of the building. Is that strictly written into the zoning conditions, how that enlargement would be?
Commissioner, that is in the applicant's proposed conditions. It's shown on the site plan. I will note that we looked at this, I'd say a little more broadly than what was described from the consistency standpoint, and we recognize that this is a, the limitations in the Land Development Code apply if it's a standard zoning district and it's developing pursuant to that. So, we did look at this in the context of it being a plan development request, there's asking for some flexibility in design. So, we did, we didn't simply say, here's what the code said, that's the end of the analysis. We did look at some of the elements of it, part of, part of the, you know, our look was where the access was going to be located, and we did note the design in the front having a somewhat non-typical residential parking lot design to accommodate the additional residents, and that factored into our recommendation to the board. But to answer your question, yes, it would be controlled by the applicant's proposed conditions of approval, that I'll just note for the board in reading them, that those conditions were, are implementable, however, they do not include the recommended transportation conditions, nor do they include the restriction on building permits for water capacity that public utilities had requested.
And, if I could just ask one last question, if this were approved for its, you know, given that it's currently a senior-bed home, but if we are approving a community home type B, could that later on, you know, given another owner, or different things, plans change, could it be something, could the 12 beds be something other than senior facility, say, drug rehab, or troubled youth, or foster home, or other kinds of community home?
The request in the applicant's proposed conditions are for a community residential home type C. There's no proposed limitation on what type of activities could go on there, other than it being a community residential home.
That does it for me. So, I find myself agreeing with staff and Planning Commission, but I'll listen to any other board discussion before.
Are there any other board members? I'd like to actually offer some comments, but I'll offer opportunity to other board members. I do have, I do have some concerns, but I actually have concerns about the fact that we actually have resources at the county through ARP for shared housing, but our land code actually causes more barriers than positive. We have not updated our land code to encourage shared housing, and given the limitation we have of housing in our community, but have heard from not only our zoning and land code folks, but also our Planning Commission, that density is not being utilized. And in this particular case, the design here is actually allowing for the residents to be somewhat protected from the community. The courtyard is encased with the building, and if the parking lot were able to be in the back, rather than along the side towards the front of the property, it would not have the same limitations of the parking to be closer to the residents next door. In my opinion, the swimming pool at the property, behind this property, would create more of a noise element than what this building appears to offer in the way of design. And while I do, I do respect the fact that we have land code and we have comp plans to protect communities, it doesn't appear from this particular design that that, that what the applicant is offering as a solution for increased need of shared housing in our community, would be contrary to the impacts that it would have from the neighbors, given that there's been no objection, or at least no objections from the neighborhood in a method of opposition of record. Is that correct?
I believe we may have had some testimony in the record.
To oppose the project?
I believe so. I'd like to ask Brian to correct me if I'm misstating that.
Mr. Hornley?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
This is Michelle, Development Services. I believe the question that Commissioner Overman asked is if there was any opposition at the ZHM, is that correct?
As part of the record, that's correct.
Yes, there was opposition presented at the ZHM hearing.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Commissioner, again, Brian, rated Development Services, I would add, it was an attorney representing the homeowners' association that's in the subdivision to the east of the project.
All right, excellent. Any other comments? Actually, I would, I mean, if, I'm gonna make, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Based on everything I've heard on the record today, I will make a motion to accept all three recommendations that we have before us, the ZHM, Development Services, and Planning Commission recommendations.
We have a motion by Commissioner White. Do I have a second?
Perfect.
A second by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Kemp, would you like to speak to the motion, or did you have a comment?
Yes, I would, well, because it may be all we have, so.
Right, go ahead.
I just, I was, I'll just say I was intrigued by your comments, Commissioner Overman, and I do think it's time to look at this. This is already, what, also, apparently, the opposition is only from, if I understood that, and I'd like to clarify, they said a subdivision to the east, not the surrounding property owners, which is extremely interesting to me, and the fact that they are already in operation with six people living there, and, you know, I think, I don't know about if there were something like conditions to seniors also as part of it. I know I heard the type B, type C, I wasn't sure about that, but I do think it's, it's interesting that it operates now in that way, that we haven't heard, I don't think, I might be mischaracterizing this, objections from the surrounding neighbors with regards to this. It does look like a very large piece of property, and that maybe could accommodate some of this in other ways, and could be a service to the area, but, you know, I just think that that's, I just want to express those thoughts about this, because I think there could be some opportunities, and I'm, as I say, I'm especially intrigued by the fact of what isn't here, which is the surrounding neighbors on a property that's already operating in this capacity, who are not objecting to it being something different, even larger.
Madam Chair, may I do the rebut, please?
It's the board's pleasure to hear from the applicant as far as rebuttal. Are we, five minutes of rebuttal?
I'll take one minute.
You're welcome to proceed.
Commissioner Kemp brings up some good points. I understood Commissioner Smith's concerns. This is a PD, we can add any condition to it. Our only desire is for senior living and nothing else. We can absolutely add a condition immediately. I know it might not be at this venue at this time, but I believe that we can move forward to add conditions to address the concerns the commissioners have raised, and we'd like to have the opportunity to do so if the rest of the commissioners are of the same mind. Thank you.
Commissioner Cohen, did you have a comment?
How would that work? How would you do that?
A continuance?
I would be in favor of that. I would like to allow this a little bit more time, just because, and I'll make the motion for that if that would be in order.
Well, we have a motion on the floor, so either you can offer a substitute motion, if that's your pleasure.
I would make a substitute motion for continuance, to see whether or not the applicant could come up with some conditions that would satisfy the board, so that there would be a way of moving forward on this.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a substitute motion by Commissioner Cohen, a second by Commissioner Kemp and Myers. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Is the motion for a continuance to the end of this meeting, or to a future meeting?
I think it would be to a future meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Commissioner White?
Commissioners, that would be the April 12 land use meeting at 9:00 AM, the next available.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what do you, I think I need 60 days, and I'm sorry to interrupt, thank you.
I'm sorry. Is that 160, what did he say? I'm sorry.
He said he needs 60 days.
He needs 60 days, so can we move it to a date that accommodates the applicant, to be able to bring it back for continuance?
Yes, that would be the May 10 land use meeting at 9:00 AM.
I'll move it to the May 10.
Okay. Excellent. Does that work for you, the applicant, please? I believe so. Okay, great. So, we have a motion on the floor to continue this by Commissioner Cohen, a second by Commissioners Kemp and Myers. Commissioner White?
Thank you, and I just want to say that if a condition comes back that limits this to senior residents, that'll go a long way for me, so.
Thank you, thank you very much. With that, seeing no other comments, please take a roll call.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent, thank you very much. We'll move on to F2.
F2, thank you. This is application RZ PD 21-0701, located specifically at 10710 Walker Road. It's a 2.6-acre site. More specifically, I'll draw your attention, the overhead, to the north is Fowler Avenue, to the south is Joe Evert Road, have 75 over to the west in the distance. Getting onto the site itself, site is organized on the intersection of Walker Road and 301, it's at the south-west corner. Commissioners, the site has split zoning. The front of the site has CN, which permits the retail use to salt in its plan development. The rear portion of the site is zoned AR, so for all practical purposes, the commercial zoning really entails dealing with the back triangular piece of property. The request is to rezone the property from AR and CN to 20,538 square feet of retail office. Site plan entails placement of the building in the area near 301, it has access to 301, and also to Walker Road. Staff is recommending, I should mention, the site is also wrapped with the office in the area that is zoned right now, AR. They're showing office buildings in the south, so the retail essentially is staying up in the area that's CN. The area that's moving into the zoning that's AR is predominantly going to be office. Staff is recommending approval with conditions. We're available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to the applicant oral argument, have 10 minutes.
They're on their way.
Thank you. My name's Marvin Garrett, and I've been in the area for about 18 years, and it's a quiet residential area, but my big concern, one of the big concerns is that access to Walker Road.
Excuse me, sir?
Ma'am?
I believe, I hate to interrupt you, but I believe this time we've called for the applicant to speak, you would, if you're a party of record, you'll have the opportunity to speak in a moment, but at this point, we're at applicant oral argument. Is the applicant present?
I thought you asked me to come up.
Well, I saw you walking, that's okay.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. Thank you. Let the applicant do his thing.
We're clear. We can go with the applicant, and then we'll bring the opposition back up. Thank you. Do we have the applicant online?
Applicant's online on the other side, actually, I'm the owner. Dr. Rems would be online as well.
Could you please enable your camera?
Yes, sure. Can you see me?
No, sir.
Yes, now we can.
Yes, yes.
Oh, there we can, yes.
The engineer's on the other line, actually. I think he's trying to connect, he has been watching the whole meeting. He might be having some difficulties connecting.
We see you now.
Right. Dr. Rems is the engineer who is presenting the case, I'm the owner, and we went through the procedure previously, it was approved by the county. We just wanted to, you know, request your approval for the project, actually.
Sir, could you identify yourself, please?
Yes, my name's Sherkhan Ozek. I am the owner of the property, and Mr. Royal, that is the engineer, and he was on the other line, I don't know why he's not able to connect right now.
The time is ticking down for the applicant presentation?
Yes, we went through the procedures, I mean, I can present if you like, we went through the procedure with the county, and then it was approved, you know, with conditions, and we request your approval for the project, actually.
Yes, is that, is that it? Do you have anything you want to add to the description of your project?
Yeah, the project was right along with the county's request, we went with their request for approval, we minimized the rental, the retail space, so it wouldn't cause a lot of traffic as a count, and we moved the office spaces on the rear side of the property.
Thank you.
So, yes.
I mean, I don't mean to cut you off, I just, if you have anything else to add, you have?
No, no, no.
Plenty of time.
Yeah, I was actually trying to get Dr. Rems on the call, I don't know where he's, he was on the other line from his office.
How about we move to the oral argument by proponent and opponent, and see where we, I mean, should we wait for the, and put this off till later in the agenda and see if, let me ask this of the property owner, do you believe, would you like us to put your item later on the agenda and see if your engineer shows up?
Yes, if you could do that, please, because I'm sure, I just hope he's on the other line, but maybe he's having technical difficulties.
Yes.
If you could do that for the question, please.
So, do we need a board motion to, yeah?
Move to waive the rules and?
And move this item to the end of the agenda?
Second.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, we'll take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent, thank you very much, and if you'll work on bringing your applicant online Thank you very much. And if you'll work on bringing your applicant online for later, we'll entertain your item a little bit. Moving on to F3. Mr. Moreta.
Just for clarification on the previous case, that was moved to the end of the agenda, correct?
End of the F section?
Yes.
Yes.
Just want to make sure that the opposition that's in the audience, they understand that we have a couple more cases after this, and thank you.
Yeah, we have actually, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 more items before they would Please proceed.
This brings us to item F3 on the agenda. This is rezoning plan development 21-0744, located at 2705 Bloomingdale Avenue. It's a request from AS1, which permits 1 acre minimum lot size to 6,000 square foot lot product, proposing 18 lots. I'm going to ask Brian Grady to go ahead and present the reasons for staff's evaluation and ultimately leading into the recommendation. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. That will open up for oral arguments. The applicant has offered 10 minutes.
Madam Chair, before we hear from the applicant, this is Brian Grady Development Services.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Request.
Go right ahead.
Again, Brian Grady, Development Services. The subject parcel is located on the north side of Bloomingdale Avenue, south side of Bloomingdale Avenue, east of Lithia Pinecrest Road. They're requesting a single-family subdivision, 18 units, minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. Staff did find the request compatible with the surrounding development. Again, you can see from this here, a little closer view of the surrounding development, which is a mix of standards, single-family zoning districts and agricultural zoning districts. You will note that staff has not supported the request. Again, the issue is not with the compatibility of the proposed lot development layout. It really was an issue with respect to compliance with the connectivity and the desire for the project to have access along its southern boundary in this general area, down in this area here. The applicant is providing cross-access along the western boundary to the west, but staff felt that, given the development pattern and the potential for future redevelopment of these larger parcels in the south, that it was appropriate to provide cross-access to the south. The applicant was not agreeable to providing that access point, and that was the reason for staff's non-supporting the application. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The oral argument is limited to the parties of record. Is the applicant present to offer oral arguments for 10 minutes?
Good morning, Commissioners. William Malloy, 325 South Boulevard, Tampa, Florida. Representing the applicant here. Commissioners, as you can see by this graphic, which is part of the site plan, this is a fairly complicated site in terms of environmental impacts. We were able to, pardon me, design the subdivision so that most of the water, the drainage, and the floodplain mitigation is rear-loaded to the property here. We have a wetland buffer area, a wetland, two floodplain ponds, and a retention pond here. Where we're at odds with staff seems to be on the viability or the appropriateness of a cross-connection to the south, which would, in some way, have to go through this wetland, this floodplain mitigation area, et cetera. We weren't willing to commit to that, not for any financial or otherwise reason. We just felt it was bad planning and bad policy. It's not impossible to build the road. It would just compromise the project. We feel like it would compromise the wetlands, et cetera. But that's not valid argument for not building it, and to that end, we just came up with the idea this morning that perhaps to mitigate any environmental impacts and also address the idea that we should have cross-access in cardinal directions, we'd like to reach out to some of the appropriate agencies and discuss perhaps a conservation easement on the southern end of the property, at least for the first 30 feet here in the wetland buffer area, potentially for all of the environmentally sensitive areas. I understand from staff that would require a continuance because we would need to find an agency likely EPC to accept the easement, but as of right now, that is our request, is to take a little bit more time and see if we can't come to a more practical answer for this project. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. You still have 8 minutes remaining, but with that, we can move on to oral argument by any proponents or opponents of the party of record? Or do we want to just, well, we'll go there. Any, I don't, are there any proponents or opponents of party of records that wish to speak at this time?
No one in the audience.
Seeing none, and assuming we're going to address any rebuttal issues, Planning Commission staff has a presentation?
Well, would it be appropriate at this time, if we're going to continue it, to just go ahead and continue it?
That was, yeah, that's what I wasn't sure about. If we need to go ahead and hear the various different arguments before we move on to the continuance.
So if, I would suggest it's not, if the board is comfortable making a continuance and allowing the applicant to, the opportunity to pursue a conservation easement on the site, that would be, that would be appropriate, the staff, if it comes back.
I'd move a continuance at this time.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Cohen, a second by Commissioner Myers. Any comment? Commissioner Smith?
I'm sorry.
Commissioner White?
Thank you very much. I'm supportive of the continuance. I don't live too terribly far from the subject site. I can tell you, at one point, and maybe this has changed based upon improvements to our stormwater system, but I can tell you, there was at least a time where I've seen, I don't think I'd be exaggerating to say a foot of water on that site, certainly 6 inches. I mean, it, that site has flooded. So although I know where staff is coming from with respect to potential connectivity to the south, and I know there's been board direction on connectivity, it would not make any sense in this particular case. Mr. Gormley, I can, if this motion passes, I can address this at the next meeting when it comes back, but I don't know if we have any stormwater professionals available today to just speak to the idea of if the applicant puts stormwater infrastructure to the south, if there's a conservation easement over it, is it possible that we, that the broader community actually ends up with a net benefit with respect to stormwater mitigation, flood mitigation?
It would depend on the design and how much water was taken on. It would certainly not exacerbate the situation. There's a possibility, depending on how they designed that stormwater pond, that they could improve.
Is that something, if this motion passes and this is continued, is that something we can have staff touch on when this comes back?
To a very general degree, it's going to, one, it's where, we don't have that type of information in the record, and it will be an engineering exercise.
Okay.
Expect that whether or not they have an easement, they're still going to provide the same stormwater infrastructure, which includes their proposed floodplain compensation. I'll say what's been shown is not an engineered-type drawing. It is probably information that the applicant has. So we could touch on it generally, but it's fairly limited from a design standpoint, what's--
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to at least touch on that in those general terms. I can tell you, we've all heard the horror stories about people getting, allegedly getting flooded from new developments because they built up, but that's not always the case. I'm actually working with a constituent in a different area of Valrico that's looking for help to get taken out of the FEMA floodplain because the new development in the area with the stormwater enhancements, the new stormwater ponds, they've actually provided for a net benefit to the surrounding community. So that's something I'd like to hear a little bit more about, and just wanted to, to just, as someone that knows the area very well, just provide that context about a potential connection to the south.
Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. That's very interesting, and I would be open, I mean, when I first looked at this, I'm like, we are always about the connectivity. These are man-made, in large part, man-made retention ponds. Wouldn't there be some way that they could be engineered to work, get both, get the stormwater and connectivity? So I would like to, you know, understand that in detail during, when this comes back, but I'm certainly open and happy to hear your eyewitness and firsthand account of the flooding in that area and understand that if the stormwater is more valuable, stormwater retention is more valuable than the connectivity, I'd be open to that.
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
And I was going to, and I took my comments off as I was hearing and put them back on. I was going to kind of go the same place as you did, Commissioner Smith, because they are, you know, engineered pieces. These are, although it said, but I really wasn't, it said wetland buffer, then there was a retention pond, and then there were floodplain but not wetland areas designated, delineated that I saw on the entire whole thing of it. So I was just a little more curious to understand if it could be, I think that's very interesting, what you say, Commissioner White, but I'd like to understand also, in fact, I was a little disappointed that we didn't hear the other parts from the Planning Commission. I know that that was the sentiment of the group, so I also just gave up on hearing through that. I thought maybe I'd learn a little bit from that, but wanted to really understand if it can be engineered to accommodate both, if it really is that impractical or unsustainable or, you know, so I'd be more, I would be interested in seeing more about what Commissioner Smith said as well, kind of if this could be worked out.
Thank you. I had, I had some questions regarding the opportunity for conservation of the wetlands, and I do. I know that we've, as a board, have asked for a lot of connectivity, and there is some being offered by this, but not to the south. And we also have heard the stories of areas in wetlands such as like this, or maybe such as like this, because we need a little more information, but where roads actually are not able to be maintained well because they're in areas that are damaged by water rise, and if this area is one that floods quite often, having a road to the south might actually make it very difficult for people to access those other properties. So I'm looking forward to supporting the, you know, the continuance so that we can gather more information, see what's possible, and make sense for not only the community as far as the development, but also for the environment as it's addressed with EPC. So with that, I was not seeing Kemp. Commissioner Kemp, did you have a, okay. Not seeing any further comments, please take a roll call vote.
Commissioner, the continuance date will be April 12 at 9:00 a.m.
April 12? Excellent.
Overman.
Yes.
Cohen.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent. Mr. Moreta, F4?
Thank you. That brings us to, F4 was remanded.
Oh, I'm sorry. It was remanded. My apologies. Didn't mark it through. Okay. F5.
That brings us to F5 on the agenda. This is a rezoning proposal, plan development 21-0748, located at 3450 Fletcher Avenue. The plan development proposal is for a 620-bed student housing project. I'll draw your attention to the overhead. Project has frontage on Fletcher. It is just north of University of South Florida. Project is outlined in red. Again, it has, it's organized with frontage on Fletcher, and it's right across the street from USF Magnolia Drive. Staff is recommending approval with conditions. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Are there any other presentations by staff?
No other presentations.
Excellent. Thank you very much. May we hear oral arguments from the applicant? I have 2 individuals signed up to speak, and there's 10 minutes available to you.
Good morning. This is Elise Bassel with Sterns Weaver Miller. May I share my screen?
Yes, go ahead.
Just let me know when you can see that.
Go ahead. We can.
Okay. As Joe indicated, this property is generally located on the north side of Fletcher Avenue. It's east of Florida Hospital and Bruce B. Downs Boulevard, and it's across from the University of South Florida. The request is to rezone the property from SPIUC2, University Community, to a plan development. We did do a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment that was approved by this board on December 9. Generally, the development is student housing with a parking garage and amenities, and we are seeking to utilize the density bonus in policy 23.5 of the comprehensive plan. Just basically, the Hillsborough County Vision map envisions this area within the urban area for potential growth. You can see the approximate location on the map. This area supports density, and the goals for the urban area include trans, the fact that transit is located within the walking distance of the project, that's the case here, and that parking is proposed to be provided in a parking structure. It is part of the university area community planning overlay. This is just a map of the approved future land use, RMU 35. The current zoning does allow dormitories, community residential homes, professional residential facilities, and commercial apartments, but there's a distinction in the code between dormitories and student housing, thus the request for the rezoning today. The proposed zoning, of course, is planned development, and we are requesting to utilize the density bonus, which would allow us up to 50 units per acre. This project is within the urban service area. In fact, it is located along and within 660 feet of an arterial roadway and transit corridor. This increase in density is compatible with development patterns in the immediate vicinity.
John, just wait. Just, this is because--
I'm sorry, no one needs to move.
It would include 620 beds. There are 8,700 square feet of amenities, including rooftop amenities and a pool on the parking garage. We do have .28 acres of open space as well. I'm going to go quickly through these next slides. To give you a little more information, I know that vehicular and pedestrian cross-access are very important. We worked with staff. You can see on the very top in red, we have 2 points of proposed vehicular cross-access, 1 to the east and 1 to the west. The area circled in yellow is proposed pedestrian cross-access, both to the east and the west. You can see generally in green the areas that we've designated as open space. We are also providing bicycle parking as well as vehicular parking at .75 spaces per bed. This was the determination made by your transportation department for an unlisted use in the code. Just to talk a little bit more about the alternatives to transportation and parking, the Bull Runner has several stops within a quarter and a half a mile, which are free to students. Hart also has several stops within a quarter and a half a mile, free to students. There are bicycles, walking, and driving possibilities all within this area, so it's a perfect opportunity for urban infill. With respect to height, we do propose 100 feet for a 9-story building, but it, just to look at the pictures, you can see there are a number of other buildings at similar heights. This is looking east on Fletcher Avenue. This is looking west on Fletcher Avenue, the Advent Health recent addition, and the adjacent site to this property is also under construction. From a compatibility standpoint, it is within the urban service area. It supports the Hillsborough County Vision map within the university area community plan. Fletcher Avenue is an arterial county roadway with a signalized intersection to enter USF campus. There is existing transit in the area, including a Hart stop on East Fletcher, and there's also access to the Bull Runner. So infrastructure is within the City of Tampa Utility Service area. It's available. Your staff and the Planning Commission has requested recommendations of approval, as has the land use hearing officer. So we would appreciate your support of this project today, and our entire team is here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You have 4 minutes approximately left. Is there anyone else on your team that would like to speak?
No, ma'am. We're just here to answer questions if anyone on the board has questions.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, we'll open up oral arguments. Okay, thank you very much. With that, we'll open up oral arguments by any proponents or opponents party of record. I don't see any signed up to speak at this point, either proponents or opponents.
None in the hearing room.
Seeing none, we can offer any rebuttal to questions that may be asked by the board. Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Well, I was, I was just going to say, my understanding is that if Fletcher was not a failed roadway, this would have been on the consent agenda. And I was going to move approval of it as soon as we went through the motions.
We have a motion by Commissioner Cohen, a second by Commissioner Smith. Do we need to hear from the Planning Commission as well as the zoning hearing master prior to proceeding? Just to make sure that we're following?
It's to the board's discretion. They're both supportable, and the, and the motion made is consistent with the report from the Planning Commission and the zoning hearing master.
I'm fine with moving forward, so I'm good. Okay. Okay, seeing no other comments by the board, and we have a motion by Commissioner Cohen, a second by Commissioner Smith, please take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. I love it when projects are perfect. Thank you very much. On to F6. Mr. Morata.
F6, thank you. Rezoning Plan Development 21-1335, located at 910 Northeast 19th Avenue. This is an 82.5-acre site. The proposal is for a planned development to allow 242 single-family homes with a 4,600-square-foot lot product. Mr. Brian Grady is going to walk you through the particulars of this site, and he will conclude with a recommendation. Thank you.
Brian Grady, Hillsborough County Development Services. As, just to orient the commissioners, the project is located in the Ruskin area, east of US 41, north, the northwest corner of 12th Street, northeast and 19th Avenue Northwest. Surrounding properties include county-owned, a parcel of the north, and a planned development that's owned by the school board, that's allowed for school-related support uses. There's existing single-family residential subdivisions to the east, south, southeast, and plus multifamily in the southeast. To the west and, to the southwest is commercial, and to the west, there's a mobile home RV park and also a drive-in movie theater plus commercial zoning. Here's the proposed site plan. The project is providing access connections to both 19th Avenue and 12th Street, and also connectivity to the adjacent parcel of the northeast, our future connectivity, and also pedestrian access to the county-owned parcel to the north. One, to highlight one feature of this project, while there wasn't, no specific testimony at the hearing in support or opposition to this, we did have letters in the file regarding concerns about the impacts of this development on the movie theater with respect to ambient light impacts. In response to that, the applicant has proposed a 45-foot buffer along the western boundary to preserve trees within that area to help protect the movie theater overall. I would note that this is a three units per acre. It's a res 12 plan category. However, it is in the coastal high hazard area, therefore, I felt that the density of three units per acre was appropriate, given the coastal high hazard area. Staff did recommend approval and available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll open it up for oral arguments by the applicant. You have 10 minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kami Corbett with the law firm of Hill Ward Henderson, and I'm here representing the applicant. As Brian indicated, we did have a few emails in the record regarding compatibility issues with the drive-in theater, and we have taken measures to address that. We did not have any opposition testimony at the hearing. We did reach out and speak directly to the folks that wrote the letters in, and so we did actually proactively follow up with them. And at this time, I'd just like to have Alexis Crespo, who had those communications and who is our planner on this case, come up and make a very brief presentation, and we are here to answer any questions. Also, Ms. Crespo will need to be sworn she was not here when the swearing in occurred.
Thank you very much. Would you like to swear, Ms. Crespo, in, please?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Thank you. As Kami said, I'll be very brief. Good morning, Alexis Crespo with RVI Planning, representing Taylor Morrison of Florida. If you could advance to Slide 7, that would be great. I'm just going to hit on a couple of key points that Mr. Grady made. This is a 242-unit, single-family community being proposed by Taylor Morrison. We have reduced our density. We are in the coastal high hazard area, and we are below that res 12 density allowance because we have other single-family communities around us, so that creates a very consistent development pattern with our neighbors. The yellow areas are where the homes will be located. You see, there are stormwater management areas on site, and we are preserving the wetlands, which are predominantly in the northern portion of the project. In order to be compatible with the Ruskin drive-through, we did propose a 45-foot-wide native vegetative buffer. That is along that western property line, wherever we have homes abutting the theater. And you'll note that those yellow areas where development will occur is limited to the southern portion of that property line. So in effect, the theater will abut lakes, wetland preserve areas, and then again, a very vast 45-foot-wide native buffer. We are in agreement with staff that this case is compliant with your land development code and comprehensive plan, and we would respectfully request your approval. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I have time set aside, 10 minutes each, for any proponents or opponents of record. I'm seeing none listed. Do we have any of the proponents or opponents in the audience?
None are putting the microphone. Thank you.
Excellent. Seeing that, we don't necessarily need a rebuttal, from my understanding. So Planning Commission staff?
Thank you, Melissa Leinhart, Planning Commission staff. The subject property is located in the residential tall future land use category. The site is in the urban service area and also located within the limits of the Apollo Beach Community Plan, the Ruskin Community Plan, and the South Shore Area-Wide Systems Plan. The applicant requests to change the zoning from AR to PD to develop 242 single-family homes. The proposed density, the proposed residential use is consistent with the surrounding residential densities and meets future land use element Policy 1.4 regarding compatibility with the surrounding development pattern. The subject property is in the urban service area where 80% or more of new growth is to be directed for the comprehensive plan. The proposal meets the intent of Objective 1 of the future land use element by providing growth within the urban service area. The proposed plan development does not meet the minimum density required for properties within the urban service area. However, the site is located entirely within the coastal high hazard area. It meets the Policy 1.3 exception to minimum density requirements that allows for less than 75% of the allowable density. In addition, there are wetlands on the site, which causes limitations on site design. The proposed density is approximately three dwelling units per gross acre, and the proposal is consistent with Policies 1.2, 1.3, and 13.3 of the future land use element, all with regard to compatibility and environmental features. The applicant is proposing an eternal roadway, a roadway network to provide for circulation within the neighborhood, off-site interconnectivity where appropriate, while clustering development away from the onsite environmentally sensitive lands. The proposed plan includes sidewalk connectivity to adjacent neighborhoods along the project frontages. The proposal meets the intent of future land use element Policy 16.7 with regard to connectivity. The request is also consistent with several goals found in the Apollo Beach, Ruskin, and South Shore plans. It provides a variety of single-family housing types that is consistent with the existing development pattern in the surrounding area, and also protects the existing natural environment. Based upon those considerations, Planning Commission staff finds the proposed plan development consistent with the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County, and that's subject to the conditions that are proposed by Development Services. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Leinhart. With that, we'll move on to the zoning hearing master summary, and then I'll get to the board discussion or questions.
The zoning hearing master considered the applicant's request for rezoning of 82.5 acres from agricultural, rural, and commercial general to planned development, to develop a maximum of 242 single-family homes. The Planning Commission staff found that their request does not meet the minimum density standards for parcels within the urban service area, but does meet an exception, given the property's location within the coastal high hazard area and onsite wetlands, which limit development potential. As you've heard, the Planning Commission staff found their request to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. The zoning hearing master found that properties to the south and southeast are developed with single-family homes with minimum lot sizes of 5,000 square feet and 4,400 square feet, respectively. A mobile home park is located to the west. The zoning hearing master noted that the Ruskin family drive-in theater is located adjacent to the subject property to the west. The applicant has proposed a 45-foot buffer with an onsite stormwater retention pond and existing vegetation adjacent to the theater parcel to ensure compatibility. No single-family homes are proposed in that area. Following the zoning hearing master hearing, the zoning hearing master's recommendation was for approval of the request.
Excellent. Thank you very much. With that, I'll open it up to the board discussion. Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Quick question. I feel pretty sure Commissioner Smith might be asking this one, too. This is in the area where we have the water restrictions in place. Is this, is this project, have the condition attached to it where the water issues have to be solved prior to permitting? Not solved, but we've set certain criteria that have to be in place in order for the permits to go forward.
Yes, Commissioner, that, that condition is included, and it is condition number 12 in the backup. And it is, this is the same version that we've been using that has no end date to it, is included, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. And my biggest concern is the Ruskin drive-in and protection of that. That is a...
It's the last one.
That's the, an iconic piece of the Ruskin community. Apollo Beach also claims it. In our community plans, we argued over the boundary of who gets the Ruskin drive-in, and we finally agreed we'd both get it, because it is so important to the history. The, the drive-in operates on very thin margins, of very thin profit margins. It's really a labor of love by the people who are operating that, and, and it's really important to keep that as, as part of the character of, of South County and keep it operating. If you read in the party of record, the letter from the owner of the Ruskin drive-in, he notes that there's been so much development in downtown that a lot of light has been coming in, and of course, once you have too much light, you can't operate a, a drive-in theater. But particularly from this side, there's a, a great concern in the community that those trees that have been there, trees and vegetation for the whole time, blocking light, if they were removed, you know, would put the drive-in out of business. You wouldn't be able, you wouldn't be able to operate. So I understand and appreciate that the applicant has been working with the drive-in, and I can see that they are, you know, no longer here, although knowing them, not everybody is sophisticated enough to know that you have to keep on appearing, hearing after hearing, and end up here to have your final say. So what we do here is done here. I see condition number four that says a 45-foot buffer shall, and this is on page 10 of the backup, 45-foot buffer shall be provided along the western property boundary, along the western project boundary. Existing vegetation, excluding non-native vegetation species, shall be preserved within the buffer area. This buffer shall be platted as a separate tract to be owned and maintained by the homeowners association or similar entity. And it's important to have it a separate tract from each homeowner or any homeowner so that people don't begin putting a shed back there or, or other things because it's their own property. But even having it owned and maintained by the homeowners association or similar entity, which we don't know what that would be, you know, I wonder, like, to what extent would it, nothing here says anything about, the point of it is to obscure light. So, so owned and maintained by the homeowners association 10 years from now could be taken to mean, well, we just landscape that with some bushes or something we don't like what's back there, and we want to plant something else, some flowers. Well, that wouldn't be addressing the reason that we have this 45-foot buffer. And, and so I guess I'll start with staff, but maybe even go to the applicant and say, is there, is there anything that would ease my mind here that 10 years from now, whoever is in charge of this 45-foot buffer would understand that they're responsible for maintaining a light obstructing area rather than just, you know, maintaining this buffer to however they want?
So Commissioner, the, the way that condition is read, is, is worded, it's, it's a required buffer, it needs to be a separate tract, but it also requires the maintenance of that existing vegetation in there, with the exception of invasives. So that, that will not change over time. That, that requirement to maintain that vegetation will be static and, and will apply as long as the project is, is subject to these zoning conditions.
But if they did go in unknowingly, you know, because there's nothing, they didn't understand what the point of it was, and, and decide to re-landscape, would that be a code violation while the, while the drive-in is disabled and waiting for trees to grow? I mean, what happens?
That, if, if the vegetation were removed, that would be a violation of the condition of zoning. It would be subject to enforcement action through code enforcement, Code Enforcement Board, as well if there was any regulated trees that were removed without permits, that would be another violation of, of not, not specifically the PD, but of our land development code that provides for tree protection.
Let me ask Ms. Corbett if she could, you know, help me think of something you could agree to that would, and I, you know, I understand what your point of view is in some regard here, but could you put in here that, that the point is to obscure light to the same extent that it, that it is with the existing vegetation or anything like that? I mean, is there anything that you could suggest that would ease my concerns you're hearing here?
Kami Corbett, for the record. Sure, we, we could agree to language like that. We could also, we were brainstorming over here in the library and thinking of if their trees were to be removed or dead or diseased or died, that they would be replaced at a similar height and caliper as to what is there today. So we are very open to working with you on, on this condition and what makes you, would make you comfortable. And adding that the language that it's intended to obscure light is perfectly fine.
I think if you could do that, that I could, I could be brought along. So do you want some time to, to craft that?
I would, I would think that would be beneficial. I'd like to make sure that we craft something that's reflective of the board's direction here and something that we can effectively enforce.
I'll, I'll move to continue this to after F2.
Second?
Okay.
And, and thank you, Ms. Corbett, for being willing to work with us on the fly.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner White, a second by Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. And I, too, want to offer kudos to the applicant for working with the drive-in. And before we get to work in, in crafting amendments to this condition, I have a question. Although I'm very familiar with the drive-in site, there's, there's something that I just can't recall off the top of my head. I do know that there are a lot of Australian pines in Ruskin. I can't recall whether or not there are a lot of Australian pines in that 45-foot buffer, but if so, it sounds like they would be removed. Would we still have enough of a screening to block the light if that were to, to take place?
Commissioner, at this point, I don't know that we know what trees are within that buffer, so that's something we can talk to the applicant about, whether they have a... So that's something we can talk to the applicant about, whether they have an idea of what those numbers might be and how that removal might affect.
Yeah, I'd like to hear him speak to that. And when we come back to it would be fine with me. And I don't know if we have any natural resources staff available to either speak to that issue or to trade notes with the applicant. But if they're going to remove the non-natives and they end up removing a bunch of Australian pines, you know, although I would normally be a proponent of getting rid of the Australian pines, you know, maybe if that's going to be the case, maybe they should remain in place at least long enough for some native vegetation to take hold and grow and hide or whatnot. Or maybe it's a non-issue. Maybe it's a lot of native stuff in that buffer. But I'd like to hear that when we come back to it.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Kemp, you recognized?
Thank you. I just, Commissioner Cohen, when you posed, after you posed your question, I knew that that was not going to be the question by, or the concerns of Commissioner Smith. And I just want to, the care, you know, I knew when I saw that it was a Ruskin drive-in and that I didn't have to worry that it wouldn't be well, well cared for in whatever you spoke to at this, and that it is an important and iconic community asset which you care deeply about. But also, what a great catch, the Australian pines. I mean, we have a board here that's so intimately familiar with the landscape of the drive-in. And looking at that, it's great that they have such good advocates here. So that's all I wanted to add in.
Great, thank you. And I, too, want to commend the comments regarding the drive-in and the protection of the drive-in. It is the last drive-in. Given the sale of fund land up on 22nd Street to be developed for an apartment complex, this drive-in is the last one in Hillsborough County. And I'd like to see that preserved. And I do believe that if there is some language that would preserve the height protections offered by the current landscaping may need to be incorporated so that if, in fact, replacement trees for Australian pines, should that be the necessary course of action for invasive species or problematic, that we make sure that there is a strategy for actually keeping that buffering, that light buffering in place to protect the drive-in. So thank you very much for bringing that. And seeing no further comments, we can take a roll call vote.
Overman.
Yes.
Cohen.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you very much. Mr. Morata, F7?
Thank you. That brings us to F7, rezoning plan development 21-1336. This is a proposal to rezone from AE. Excuse me, this is a proposal to rezone from AR to plan development. The plan development is proposing 47 units, square foot, excuse me, is proposing 47 units of single-family product. The lot size is 65,000 square feet, and it's located on County Road 579, just north of Joe Ebert Road and south of Horning, outlining this area red. Again, the project is 118 acres, and they're proposing 47 lots, and the lot size is 65,000 square feet. We're available for questions, and we're recommending approval. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any other comments from developments services?
No other comments.
Seeing none. We'll move forward to oral arguments by the applicant, if you have 10 minutes. I have two applicants actually signed up for this item, Randy June and Chip Webb. Either of them present, or if there's any other one representing the applicant. Please proceed.
Good morning. This is Jessica Irsman with Sterns Beaver Millow, 401 East Jackson Street, Suite 2100. Also with me today virtually is Mr. Randy June, the property owner and the engineer on the project.
Have they both been sworn in?
I'm sorry?
Have you both been sworn in?
No.
Could you pull a clerk?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Do.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Thank you. I have any presentation being pulled up? Next slide, please. So as noted by your staff, this property is about 118 acres. It's located in Thonotussasa, west of County Road 579 and north of Joe Ebert Road. Next slide, please. We are requesting a rezoning to PD. The future land use is remaining the same at AE, and this is within the rural services area. The homes will be on septic and well. Currently, the property is being used as a burrow pit. It does have valid operating permits. The uses surrounding the property are single-family homes. There is a 300-foot gas transmission line that runs south of the property. There's also a gas plant across County Road 579. Next slide, please. This is a, you know, just an excerpt of the site plan. You'll notice the connectivity to the north, south, east, and west. Next slide, please. Again, this is for 47 single-family units on approximately 118 acres. This gives us a density of 0.4 units per acre. The minimum lot size will be approximately 1.5 acres with the minimum lot width at 150 feet. The setbacks are consistent with AR zoning setbacks. We are also proposing an equestrian trail around the perimeter of the property that will be 75 feet wide to the east, west, and south, and 200 feet wide to the north. We are not requesting any waivers. Next slide, please. Your staff has, or Planning Commission has found the PD and the proposed project consistent with the Thonotussasa community plan, as well as the comprehensive plan as a whole. Next slide. Again, we are connecting the property to the north, south, east, and west. The properties to the north and to the west are proposed future interconnections or future cross-access points for when those properties develop. The access to the south is to an existing approved subdivision, and the access to the east is to County Road 579. A traffic study has been performed, and some improvements were required pursuant to that study, and those improvements have actually already been performed in connection with the burrow pit. Next slide, please. This is a phase four of a four-phase subdivision. Phase one is already constructed. Phase two is under construction. Phase three is currently a burrow pit that it will be soon under construction, and phase four is what we are here for today. Phase four is the lowest density of these four subdivisions at 0.4 units per acre. Next slide, please. And as you heard from your staff, they have recommended approval with conditions. Planning Commission also found the project consistent. The ZHM has recommended approval subject to the conditions, and we respectfully request approval, and we are available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you have any other member of your applicant team that'd like to speak at this time? You have six minutes, approximately six minutes remaining.
We do not, however, we are available for questions.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And I do not see any proponents or opponents of record signed up to speak. Do we have anyone in the library or online that wishes to speak to this item?
No one's approaching the dais. Thank you.
All right. Excellent. Then can we hear from the planning commission staff, please?
David Hay with your planning commission staff. Melissa Leinhart had to step away due to a family emergency. I have not been sworn, so I don't know if you need to swear me in.
Yes, clerk, would you do that, please?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Please proceed, sir. Thank you.
Right. The subject property is located within the agricultural estate. That's the 1.1 to 2.5 future land use category. The site is located in the rural area and is located within the limits of the Thonotussasa community plan. Typical uses in the AE 1 to 2.5 future land use category include farms, ranches, residential uses, rural-scale neighborhood commercial uses, offices, and multipurpose projects. The intent of the category is to designate areas best suited for agricultural development and for compatible rural residential uses. For objective four, the rural area is intended for agricultural uses and large lot, low-density rural residential uses. The proposed 47 single-family homes will have 1.5-acre lots, which are comparable with the large lot, low-density rural residential uses of the surrounding area. The approximately 118-acre site allows for up to 47 dwelling units per the AE 1 to 2.5 future land use category. The applicant is asking for the maximum density allowed on-site. The site plan proposes an equestrian easement trail around the perimeter of the property that is 75 feet wide to the east, west, and south, and 200 feet to the north. Policy 16.2 requires gradual transitions of intensities between different land uses be provided for as new development is proposed through the use of professional site planning techniques. The equestrian easement trail around the entire perimeter helps to meet the intent of policy 16.2. Policy 16.3 requires development and redevelopment be integrated through the use of complementary land uses. The subject property is in a rural residential future land use classification. The development pattern along County Road 579 consists predominantly of single-family residential dwellings, vacant lots, and agricultural properties. The proposed modification is consistent with the neighborhood protection policies under objective 16 in the future land use element of the comprehensive plan. The site is within the limits of the Thonotussasa community plan. Goal three of the plan calls for a balance of residential, commercial, and other land uses while maintaining the rural nature of the area. This encourages agricultural, this, excuse me, this encourages agriculture, protection of property owners' rights, and open space and green space. Plan strategies include minimum lot sizes of 1 acre and protecting the area's rural character. Proposed development will have minimum lot sizes of 1.5 acres and an equestrian easement trail around the perimeter that will provide open and green space. The proposed development will provide a rural residential land use that fits with the surrounding area. The proposed development meets the intent of the Thonotussasa community plan. Based upon those considerations, Planning Commission staff finds proposed plan development consistent with the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County, subject to the conditions proposed by the Development Services Department. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Give our regards to Ms. Leinhart. Zoning Hearing Master summary, please.
The zoning Hearing Master considered the proposed rezoning of approximately 118 acres located at County Road 579, west of, I'm sorry, on the west side of County Road 579 and about 1,800 feet south of Skuli Road in the Thonotussasa area. The subject property's current zoning is agricultural rural designated AE 1 to 2.5 on the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Future Land Use map, located within the rural services area, within the boundaries of the Thonotussasa community plan. The applicant's proposal is to rezone the subject property to a planned development to allow development of up to 47 single-family detached dwelling units. The zoning Hearing Master found existing land uses in the surrounding area include public service facility, utility facility, residential, including mobile home and single-family residential lots, and agricultural uses. Adjacent to the subject property on the north are single-family residential uses; on the south are agricultural uses; and on the east are County Road 579 and public service facility; on the west are agricultural uses. County staff found the proposed rezoning compatible with the existing zoning districts and development pattern in the area and recommends approval. Planning Commission staff, as you've heard, has found the proposed rezoning to be compatible with the surrounding rural residential area, and has concluded that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Following the zoning Hearing Master hearing, the zoning Hearing Master recommended approval of the request.
Excellent. Thank you very much. With that, I'll open up to board discussion or consider a motion.
Move of approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Smith. Seeing no other comments, please take a roll call vote.
Overman.
Yes.
Cohen.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent. We have three more items. We have F8, F2, and F6. And it's noon. What's the board's pleasure? You'd like to continue these items or take a break for lunch?
I think we're probably close enough to the finish line to wrap them up. I think the two that were deferred will go pretty quickly.
I agree. So I just wanted to get a temperature check, see how we're doing. Okay, great. Let's proceed on to item F8. Mr. Morata.
Thank you. Item F8 is a rezoning proposal for a standard district. It's 22-0201. It's located at 15509 Casey Road, 2.1-acre site. Current zoning is AS1, which permits a minimum lot size of 1 acre. Rezoning proposal is to RSE6, which permits single-family conventional on a 7,000-square-foot lot minimum. Commissioners, I'll draw your attention to the overhead. The project is located just west of Casey Road, north of Erlich, and south of Northdale Boulevard. More specifically, the project is located along Casey Road Extension, 2.1-acre site. Staff is recommending approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll open it up to the applicant for oral arguments. We have 10 minutes. I have Andrea Diaz signed up to speak on behalf of this item.
Present.
Please proceed. You have 10 minutes.
If I may, I'm the applicant's representative, John LaRoca, Murphy LaRoca Consulting Group, 101 East Kennedy Boulevard. I'm a land use planner and having represented the owner and applicant of this property.
Have you been sworn in, sir? Have you been sworn in?
Oh, I have been sworn, yes.
You have been. Excellent. Please proceed.
Okay. I'll be simple in terms of my presentation as a follow-up to the recommendation that the Development Services Department just made, and you'll hear from the Planning Commission and the report on the zoning Hearing Master's recommendation. This is a 2.1-acre site in the greater Carrollwood, Northdale area. It's what I call in an urbanizing or suburban area that's been essentially built out. It's what I call a remnant lot of approximately 2.1 acres. There is currently one owner of this property. The applicant seeks to rezone the property to RS6 for a standard suburban subdivision with seven lots. This is a Euclidean district, so it's not site plan controlled. And just for the record, I would like to show you the concept plan that we discussed at the public hearing before the Hearing Master and at least what the applicant is planning to proceed with should this zoning be granted by the board. Again, if I may, just simply, this is a conceptual plan. It's not a PD site plan, and obviously, we can't commit to that, and it's not tied to the plan, but it is a proposed seven-lot subdivision that meets minimum lot sizes of 7,000 square feet with a cul-de-sac that comes off of Casey Road or Casey Road Extension, as it's commonly known. I present that because, as you will see in, and I may switch over again, as you will see in the record, and it is presented in full with the recommendations of the Development Services Department, the Planning Commission staff, and again, the recommendation from the Hearing Master, that this is totally consistent and not out of character with the community. I respectfully request your approval. I'll save comments for any rebuttal that may come up.
Excellent. Thank you very much, sir. And you do have seven minutes left for the applicant's presentation. And I did have Ms. Diaz actually signed up to speak. Are you going to waive your time, Ms. Diaz?
No, I'm waiting for a turn, please.
No, I'm waiting for a turn, please.
Okay. Please proceed.
Good morning. I have been sworn in. My name is Andrea Diaz. I'm a resident on Otto Road in which the proposed project will be affecting. Our main question...
Ma'am, are you part of the applicant team?
No, I'm in opposition.
Okay, just a moment, ma'am. I'll call on you in just a second. My apologies. I thought you were part of the applicant team. My apologies. Okay. Thank you. Are there anyone else from the applicant team that wish to speak to this item for the remaining seven minutes or so that we had?
Again, Mr. LaRoca, I have no comments at this time. Additional comments?
Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay. I'm going to open up oral arguments by proponents and opponents, parties of record. With that, I have 10 minutes set aside for proponents. Were there any proponents signed up to speak today that were part of the party of record?
No, ma'am.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And with that, I'd like to ask for opponent party of record testimony for those that have been sworn in and were party of record. And I do have, as was mentioned, Andrea Diaz on the line. Was she a party of record?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Diaz, you're recognized as an opponent party of testimony.
Thank you. I appreciate your time in front of the board today. We are, as a community, the individual representing, the homeowner, was stating that it is in line with our community's request or in line with what our community does, and I don't quite know to which properties or ownership that they're referring to. Over the past 15 years of this zoning, meaning off of Otto Road as well as Casey Access, there has been only one major development. It was a single parcel sale, and that was back in 2017 when there was a four-acre piece of land that was sold. Again, it was a single entity sold by a single owner. It was purchased by a developer, and they had placed 11 homes on that four acres, increasing the traffic, increasing a lot of unwanted population, I guess, if you will, because prior to that sale, in 15 years, all of the properties that had been sold on the Otto Road from Ehrlich to Casey Access, as well as from the Casey Road into the Ending Division, there's been 17 sales, and in the past four years, it was 10 alone. And of those 10 sales that have happened, the owners have kept the ratio of one house to the property that was purchased. The properties range in .49 acres all the way up to 1.0 acres. Development could have happened, but as far as what the actions of this true local, tight-knit community who will be having the effects immediately given to them, we are showing that we want to buy a property, we want the space, we're trying to minimize how much development is actually happening. Any land that has been purchased, that has been improved upon, again, stays with the single home, single lot at initial purchase. Prior to the development of 2017, there was a development back in 2012, 8.6 acres, and there were six homes placed in that area. And then the only other subdivision development prior to that time was actually 10 and 15 years back, going into the early 90s and early 80s, and that was basically large vats of land that were developed for small, subal HOA communities. As a neighborhood, private street, all the owners here had sought after this land because it is spacious, because we do have quiet roads. Unfortunately, when Casey Road closes for whatever sort of maintenance that needs to be happening, our road is a direct detour pass-through. We are a family-oriented residential space, and there are many children that play through here, so including the seven houses that would be developed at the end of the road. Granted, they have the off Casey Access, but Otto Road would be a main source of them to gain access to their properties. We are not against the development of that land. We are just simply requesting that not such a multitude of homes be developed. We are more asking for the 2.4 acres, if something around a four or five-count home. The size of the homes that are being suggested to be placed on the properties are fairly large, and some of them are also supposedly supposed to be two stories, encroaching on privacy of single-story homes that are being developed now to the right of the property, which is the western property line. Again, we are not in a position of development. We're just kind of reserved as far as the quantity of homes that are being put on there. Our fear is that once the rezoning gets allotted, they technically are allowed to put six homes per acre with a total count of 12 houses. We don't know what the limitations are in the event that the rezoning is issued, if they have to stay to the seven homes that are being proposed, or once it gets rezoned, they're allowed to redraft their initial concept and actually put 12 homes on there. The other concerns are sewage, if it's going to be a septic-based entity, or if they have sewage access. We know that on Otto Road, there is none, and on older homes from 2017 and prior off of Casey Access, there are no sewer lines. So the only new development, which was the 11 homes placed on the northeast corner of Otto Road and Casey, that those were cross-pumped after a year of construction and deferment up our road to gain a pump station sewer access. So we're just kind of concerned what that's going to look like as well.
Thank you. You have four minutes remaining, ma'am, if you'd like, but if that is your testimony. Thank you very much for participating today.
No, thank you.
There is an opportunity for rebuttal by the applicant. There's five minutes set aside. Is that correct?
That's correct. I just wanted to make sure that there is no one else at Saunders, who is in opposition. There are several other parties of record, not signed up on virtual, but that could speak.
Could potentially be in the room.
Potentially.
Okay.
There's no one stepping up to the microphone that appears to be a proponent or an opponent.
Excellent. Thank you for checking. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
The applicant has five minutes for rebuttal.
Yes. Again, John LaRoca, representative of the applicant owner. I'll take a few minutes from rebuttal. Ms. Diaz's comments are certainly well-taken, and I believe she did represent herself, of course, at the zoning hearing master's hearing. I will point out that the comp plan is Res Four. We are not proposing, nor would we intend to increase density more than four dwelling units to the acre. There is no intention to build 12 lots or come in with a request to seek a higher density. I think what might help paint the picture a little better, and I'm just going to use some of the maps that are in the reports that you have in the record, and I will just refer to the Future Land Use Plan map, at least gives the idea of a pattern of what's occurring in the area and some of the larger lots that Ms. Diaz spoke of. As you might see in this representation or illustration of the comp plan for that area, the property in question is this 2.1-acre site with the petition number referenced on the drawing. This is in the Greater Carrollwood-Northdale area. Some of the larger lots that were addressed were south of the Otto Road Extension, as you can see in this drawing. This particular rezoning parcel and what is proposed to comply with the minimum lot size of 7,000 square feet is consistent with all what is developed, platted in that immediate neighborhood, to the northeast, southeast, and to some extent, there are these pockets of larger lots in the area that are evidently either held that way or protected because of some environmental or other restrictive areas. But as you can see, our position is that this is completely consistent with the character of that area in the long-range comprehensive plan. I will conclude by using some of the terminology in my rebuttal at the zoning hearing master's hearing. The character of the surrounding area in the comprehensive plan indicates that this proposal is consistent with all standards in that area and long-range plans. The applicant, some of the comments that were made the evening of the zoning hearing master's hearing was issues related to drainage compliance and tree protection and construction workers parking through the community and when that area gets developed as the area urbanizes. But the applicant intends to comply with all county standards and requirements to construct a seven-lot subdivision. That is the applicant's intent. The zoning is the appropriate category to seek to allow that development to occur. I've practiced for a long time and have done many rezoning types of this character, and obviously, first and foremost is a long-range plan that's established for the area. This use is not out of character with that area. It is appropriate to have some larger lots that are compatible, as you can see, in areas to the south, and if those areas remain that way, or if they were to be changed at some point in the future, it would have to come before a hearing master and this board if that were to change. But this particular request is not inconsistent, and the record indicates that, all the way through initial reviews by the Development Services staff and their recommendation, Planning Commission staff, and again, through the recommendation by the hearing master. I respectfully request your approval and hope that this is granted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on to speakers, sorry, I lost my place. Planning Commission?
Thank you, Commissioners. Again, David Haye with your Planning Commission staff. I have been sworn. The subject property is located within the Residential Four, future land use category. The site is located in the urban service area and is located within the limits of the Greater Carrollwood-Northdale Community Plan. The applicant is requesting to rezone the approximately two-acre subject property from Agricultural Single Family One, that's the AS1 zoning district, to Residential Single Family Conventional Six, the RSC6 zoning district, to permit the development of seven lots. The future land use designation of the subject site is Residential Four. The proposal meets the intent of Objective One in the future land use element that states that 80% of the future growth in unincorporated Hillsborough County is to occur in the urban service area. The proposed rezoning is compatible with the surrounding area, which is developed with single-family residential dwellings on all sides. Therefore, the request is consistent with Policies 1.4 and 16.10 of the future land use element regarding compatibility with nearby development. The proposed rezoning also meets the minimum density per Policy 1.3, as the RSC6 zoning district would not allow for more than eight lots on the approximately two-acre site and does not exceed the maximum density for the Residential Four, future land use category. Objective 16 and its accompanying policies require the protection of established neighborhoods and that proposed development be compatible with the development pattern of that surrounding area. The surrounding area is developed with single-family residential dwellings and is an example of residential infill on an underutilized parcel of land. There are few existing low-density residential zoning districts in the surrounding area, and the development pattern is transitioning to more medium-density zoning districts, such as RSC4 and RSC6, and a number of subdivisions that are planned developments containing residential dwellings on lot sizes from .19 acres to .73 acres. Therefore, the proposed rezoning to RSC6 is compatible with the surrounding area and would fit into the existing residential development pattern. The proposed rezoning is also consistent with Goal Two of the Greater Carrollwood-Northdale Communities Plan. That goal desires to retain the suburban character of its residential areas. The site is located in the middle of a predominantly single-family residential neighborhood that is suburban in nature, and the proposed rezoning to RSC6 meets the vision of integrating new residential development with the existing suburban character of residential areas in the Greater Carrollwood-Northdale community. Based on those considerations, the Planning Commission staff finds proposed rezoning consistent with the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The zoning hearing master summary, please.
The zoning hearing master considered the proposed rezoning of the subject property consisting of 2.1 acres, zoned currently AS1 and designated Residential Four on the future land use map of the comprehensive plan. The subject property is located within the boundaries of the Carrollwood-Northdale Community Plan, within the urban services area. The proposed rezoning will rezone the subject property to RSC6. The surrounding area was found to consist of single-family residential development. The subject parcel is directly adjacent to single-family residential to the northeast and west and Casey Road on the south. Single-family residential uses exist south of Casey Road. County staff found the majority of surrounding uses in zoning districts are similar to the proposed rezoning. Therefore, the rezoning of the subject property from ASC1 to RSC6 would be consistent with the existing zoning pattern in the surrounding area. Staff concluded the rezoning request is compatible with existing zoning districts and development pattern in the surrounding area. As you've heard from Planning Commission staff, the request was found to be consistent with the Greater Carrollwood-Northdale Communities Plan, which desires to retain the suburban character of the residential areas. Planning Commission staff found the subject property is located within an area of predominantly single-family residential development, suburban in nature, and that the proposed rezoning to RSC6 meets the vision of integrating new residential development with the existing suburban character of the area. The zoning hearing master, following the zoning hearing master's hearing, found that the request for rezoning of the subject property to RSC6 was supportable and recommended approval.
Thank you very much. I can open it up to discussion by the board. The only question I had was just confirmation that they would be required to hook up two county water and wastewater services, and it does appear in the backup that that is the case.
Yes, that's confirmed. This is within the urban service area. They will be required to hook up the public water.
And the service is available there to make the connection?
It will have to connect to available service, and they will not be permitted to develop without that service being provided. We don't have anything to indicate that that service would not be available.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Any other comments from the board?
Move of approval.
Move of approval by Commissioner Myers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cohen, seeing no further discuss... I'm sorry. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Just a quick question. I see in here the Planning Commission's comments are all about how seven lots would be compatible, but the Development Services said the intent is seven lots, but mathematically possible is 12 lots, given the RSC6, so on two-plus acres. So are we assured that this is no more than, say, eight lots in this comprehensive plan area of Res Four on two acres?
Commissioner, if the staff report says mathematically 12, that is an error. It is mathematically eight, and we've confirmed with the applicant that their intention is to develop seven and that they would be willing to commit to a restriction on the zoning that would allow no more than seven lots. And if that would address that, that item would ask the applicant to come up and confirm that. It is something they do need to agree, but I understand that they will agree to that.
I think there's two places. In the second place, it was lined through and corrected, but I just want to make sure...
Yes. Mathematically, it's eight, four units per acre on 2.1 acres, but the applicant will ask Mr. LaRoca to come up and confirm that he would agree to a restriction that it be developed with no more than seven lots.
Thank you.
No more than seven. Is the applicant present to offer that?
Yes. If I may, John LaRoca, Murphy LaRoca Consulting, representing the applicant. As stated in the staff reports, we cannot exceed four dwelling units to the acre, notwithstanding the... the zoning that we seek here, but we commit to a restriction of no more than seven lots on this property.
Okay, excellent. That is now on the record. Thank you very much, Commissioner Smith. Any other comments? Commissioner White?
So in that case, Mr. Gormly, we would want to move to rezone the property to RSC6R with the noted restriction, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Is that a substitute motion? Because we had, didn't you have a motion on the floor? Oh, Commissioner Myers, I'm sorry. Didn't you have a motion on the floor?
I'll, I'll offer that as a substitute motion.
Okay, and do we have a second? Second? Okay, I have a motion by, a substitute motion by Commissioner White, the second by Commissioner Smith. Can please take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
No.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner Hagan voted no.
Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is to bring back F2. Are we ready to do that? Staff?
We're back to F2, Commissioners. I believe where we left it off is we'll wait for the applicant's engineer.
Yes, sir. We are ready.
Excellent, excellent. So.
Leavey still needs to be sworn in.
Yeah. I do.
I can't wait. Well, let, let, please allow the clerk to offer your swear statement. Thank you.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So we are, we are actually at the applicant's oral argument section, where there's 10 minutes allowed. I don't know how much time we may have had previously. Is, is there any, is, is there a full 10 minutes remaining for the engineer to speak?
After some clarification, I think there was about nine minutes remaining.
Nine minutes? Okay. Sir, you have nine minutes to speak on behalf of item F2.
That's fine. I'll be short, you know. We had the meeting on January 18 before, and we gave the full presentation about the site, and it was approved at the time. The project is very simple, as was mentioned before. It's 2.61 acre site. It has two zones. Northern half is zone CN, and the southern half is zone AR. We are requesting a rezoning, both portions to PD, and we are meeting the, all the land development code requirements. We have done the traffic study, and we, we have made sure that we are not extra traffic generated, not more than, we have 357 daily trips, the maximum 38 trips during the peak PM hour, and it has been verified and recommended by Hillsborough County staff, Dr. James Redlip. And the, we have made sure that the retail offices will be by certain retail stores like locksmith, pet shop, radio and TV sales, vehicle parts, no medical store. So these all will be very beneficial to the neighborhood residents. And on the south portion, we have the offices. So those offices will be normal offices, and that will be beneficial to the neighborhood too, you know. We have ensured the buffer requirements on the south, the west, and north. Only on the east side, we have, we are requesting a reduction to 15 feet landscape buffer. Rest of everything is meeting all the land development code requirements, including parking. This pond requirements, drainage pond, it has been already approved by the SIFM and Hillsborough County Land Development. Rezoning people are recommending its approval. So we request approval of this rezoning to PD. If any question, I'll be willing to answer the question.
Excellent. Thank you very much, sir. Could you restate your name for the record?
My name is Dr. Ram Guel of Sunny FM LLC.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And with that, we will hear oral arguments by any proponents or opponent party of record. I'm.
We do have someone in the audience.
Do have someone in the audience, and have they been sworn in?
We have an opponent in the audience.
An opponent? All right. Are there any? Before we get on to the opponent, are there any proponents in the audience that wish to speak?
Yeah, my name's Marvin Garrett.
Just a moment, sir.
Madam Chairman, there is no one in the audience wanting to speak in support.
In support. Okay, excellent. So this is, we have 10 minutes set aside for opponent party of record. And your name, sir?
Now, okay, my name's Marvin Garrett. I've been a resident of Tonota Sasa for 15 years, actually a little longer than that, and it's a very nice community. Sony, well, my real problem, the biggest problem is safety, and one of the big concerns is the school buses. And it's, boy, and I know you might not be able to see what I'm seeing, anyway, they got to cross 301. 301 is a six-lane highway. And the proposed land use thing is for them to be able to exit onto Walker Road. Now, whenever you do that, them school buses are very underpowered, and they've got to get up ahead of steam to get across that road. And if you're going to have cars pulling out in front of those buses, you've got a busload of kids, and it's already a dangerous intersection. There've been, I know at least three fatalities there. And it would just seem common sense to enter and exit on 301 because the school bus can look right across the road and see if somebody's pulling out in front of them. And I've talked to a bunch of the truck drivers, them guys, you know, but they, they say if they got 80,000 pound load, there's no way they can stop. And them dump truck drivers, they're the worst. But anyway, that's a different thing. And there's chal, well, not, I shouldn't use chal, there's people in wheelchairs, there's old people that use this little two-lane road, and it's residential, and it's not maintained very well at all, and we're going to dump all this traffic out there. And it seems to me that there could be something done. And I, and I actually, I come up with a kind of an idea, but, you know, and that would be if you think you absolutely, without anything, you have to have Walker Road, which is the AR on this thing that they wish to rezone, which is agricultural residential, and that's what this area is, that if you, because everybody says pass, 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 and I understand money, money, money. And if you put in turning lanes on Walker Road in and out, at least that car would not be in front of that bus. And your children is your best resource. And like I say, we've got people in wheelchairs. You know, old people, especially walking their dogs, you know, they got to exercise their dogs. Well, that's the kind of place this is. And it doesn't, for me, it would seem it's a no-brainer. Why would you put your children in this kind of jeopardy? And Mr. Hagan, he's been in the area a long time, because I have too, and he knows about the school bus garage down there. And believe it or not, and I didn't, I didn't really believe it till, till they told me, meaning the people at the school bus garage, that there's over 1,300 school buses there. And they got about 800 drivers, and there's only three exits. And one of those exits, the main exit, exits onto Harney Road.
Excuse me, sir?
And onto Walker Road.
Excuse me, Mr. Garrett, I need to ask you kindly if you can limit your testimony to what you spoke about at the zoning hearing master, and I don't see anything really about the, the school bus barn and the, the school buses that are there, that there's, you know, some mention that you made about the school bus movements.
Excuse me, excuse me, but there is in the record, I'm, I'm seeing it in page 163. There's some, some party of record did write in about the school bus garage.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just, if you can just make sure that your, your testimony remains on that, on, on the record, but if, if you did mention, if someone did mention the garage, that's fair game. I'm sorry about that.
Well, I kind of lost my train of thought after all that. But anyway, I, I drove down 301, and they have some really big driveways, you know, for, for the businesses there. Why can't they just use 301, put in one of those big places? Because they have places where they turn in them semis down there. Why can't they just use 301, and then the school bus drivers can see anybody that's fixing to pull out in front of them? The way it's set, the way they propose to set it up now is they won't be able to see that person or that, that, that car. And then what happens if they have to hit the brakes? You got a school bus full of kids, you know, and, and it's, this agricultural residential area is that. It's just a little old two-lane road that barely gets maintained. You know, so myself, you know, when your kids are your most precious resource that you have, why would you put them in that kind of jeopardy? I just don't see it. And thank you. I could have rolled on about a whole bunch of other stuff, but I ain't going to. Thank you much.
Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate that. Are there, there's three minutes, three and a half minutes remaining for any other opponent testimony. Are there any other opponents in the audience? Seeing none, I will ask the applicant to offer five minutes for rebuttal.
We do have a entrance and exit from 301, which will be mainly used by the people using these retail and office spaces. We used to have two entrance and exit from the Walker Road, and realizing this school bus issue, we have cut it down to just one entrance and exit. And we will be upgrading whatever is the county requirement is, the Walker Road from US 301 up to that entrance and exit point. So there will be modification on this Walker Road area to alleviate any potential accident issue. The buses in that area, that lane will be going in a very slow speed, you know, because they are nearing the intersection with 301. So there is no need to speed up or have an accident. The people exiting out from the, this plaza to the Walker Road will have a stop sign. So they, they will not be rushing through. They will stop the car, they will look for the bus coming on the right, and then if it is safe, then and then only they will be making a left turn. Nobody will be going to the right, you know, because there is only residential areas. So most of the people will be turning left, and they will be stopping there, see if there is no car, no bus, and it's safe. Then and then only they will be making left turn to go to the US 301.
Thank you, sir. Is that the last of your testimony, of your rebuttal? You have two and a half, almost three minutes left. If you're done, thank you very much. With that, I'd like to hear from the planning commission. If anyone's available? Who's David?
Commissioners, David Haye, planning commission staff. I have been sworn. The subject property is located within the residential four, future land use category. The site is located in the urban service area and is located within the boundaries of the Tonota Sasa Community Plan. The maximum allowed floor ratio on the site in the residential four category is 0.25, and the proposed square footage is 28,422 square feet. The applicant is requesting a maximum of 20,538 square feet and an FAR of .18, below the maximum density and intensity permitted in the residential four, future land use category, and is therefore consistent with the scale expected in this future land use category. The subject property does not meet commercial locational criteria. Due to Walker Road being a major local roadway, Walker Road is a qualifying intersection. For policy 22.2, commercial uses need to be located within 300 feet of the Walker Road and US 301 intersections. 75% of the subject property is located more than 300 feet outside the intersection node. Consequently, the site does not meet commercial locational criteria, and a waiver request has been submitted for review. The overall area contains a mix of uses. There are mainly mobile home parks, office and single-family residential along the intersection of US Highway 301 and Walker Road. South of the site is a cemetery. Proposed site plan will place retail uses closest to the intersection node and will only allow office uses on the southern portion of the site. The office uses would provide a greater gradual transition of uses, moving from the more intense retail commercial at the node to office uses adjacent to existing residential properties. The applicant will be restricting uses for the commercial component. The proposed office will restrict medical office uses. The applicant is also providing a 20-foot buffer with type B screening on the south and west sides to help mitigate for the adjacent single-family residential and mobile home uses. The proposed non-residential development would complement the surrounding land uses and is therefore consistent with neighborhood protection policies of the future land use element. Planning commission staff recommends that the board approve and grant the waiver to commercial locational criteria. The subject site is located in the Tonota Sasa Community Plan. Goal three of the plan seeks to provide improved yet affordable infrastructure and a balance of residential, commercial, and other land uses while maintaining the rural nature of the area. Goal four provides for commercial and jobs, but states protecting the community identity by limiting the location, type, and size of new businesses to fit the context of the surrounding area. Proposed development would fit in with the context of the surrounding area, specifically the other office uses along this portion. other office uses along this portion of US Highway 301. The proposed development maintains a balance of retail and office uses that provides a compatible transition to the surrounding single-family residential and mobile home properties. Based on this, the rezoning is consistent with the Tenota Sasa Community Plan. Based on those considerations, the planning commission staff finds proposed plan development consistent with the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for Unincorporated Hillsborough County, subject to the conditions proposed by the Development Services Department. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And a summary from the zoning hearing master?
The zoning hearing master considered the proposed rezoning of the subject parcel, which consists of approximately 2.61 acres located at 10-7-1-0 Walker Road, at the northwest, at the southwest corner of US 301 and Walker Road, within the boundaries of the Tenota Sasa Community Plan, within the urban service area. The applicant's request is to rezon the property with planned development in order to allow the development of the subject property with a maximum of 20,538 square feet of limited retail and office uses. The zoning hearing master found that land uses in the surrounding area include office, cemetery, mobile home parks, and single-family residential. Properties adjacent to the subject property include the highway 301, office, single-family residential uses to the north, cemetery to the south, Walker Road, office and single-family residential uses to the east, and a mobile home park to the west. The proposed project will restrict the location of the allowed retail uses closer to US 301 and will place the allowed office uses along the southern and western portions of the subject property to provide for a transition of uses. The proposed PD zoning will have one access connection to US 301 and one full access connection to Walker Road. The proposed PD district reduces the minimum required eastern front setback along Walker Road to 15 feet, as proposed in the site development plan and as outlined in the proposed conditions. While the planning commission found that the subject property does not meet commercial locational criteria, the applicant has requested a waiver, which the planning commission staff supports and recommends that the board approve. The development services staff has found that the rezoning request is compatible with the existing zoning districts and development pattern in the surrounding area. And as you've heard, planning commission staff has found that the proposed development will fit the context of the surrounding area and provide for a compatible transition to surrounding single-family residential and mobile home properties. The zoning hearing master, following the zoning hearing master hearing, recommended approval of the request.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to open it up for board discussion and entertain a motion to the item.
Move approval.
A motion by Commissioner White. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any discussion? Please take a roll call vote. Oh, well, wait. I'm sorry.
Can I make, make a comment after the vote?
After the vote? Sure.
Yeah, thanks.
Sure. I believe so. Actually, I don't see why not. Yeah. Okay, go right ahead, please.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen? Hagan?
No.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner Hagan voted no.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Right, just really quickly, because we had a workshop on zoning changes that we've been discussing. We had a lot of fruitful discussion in December, and we've been, you know, we had directed staff to bring that back, to consider some things, including the issue that we ran into right here, where we're restricted, people from the public are restricted from talking about anything that's not in the record. But the record includes, in this case, 239 pages of testimony and recommendations and evidence and stuff. So, I mean, in this case, the gentleman wants to talk about bus barns that are on Wheeler Road, and there's, it's really not even possible to enforce that because it's, as you can see, it's really difficult for you to figure out, was that part of the record? It's really just kind of lucky that I was able to say, oh, no, on page 163, I happen to be noticing there's a handwritten comment from somebody, a letter, actually, that went into great length about the bus barns. But, you know, you can't be expected to know all of that in the fly to enforce this. It's, and it does interrupt the train of thought of a citizen. So, I really have been waiting patiently, but I'm hoping we are going to get back to another opportunity to look at changes like that to our zoning procedures. And I just wanted to make sure that people are still thinking about what some of these problems are in our current old crusty, rusty way of doing things. Thank you.
I hear you on that one.
And Commissioners, we will bring, we have an item that we'll bring back for some decision points to the board the next meeting. What's occurred since December is per the board's request, there's been surveys done of other jurisdictions and what the structure they have, and what type of pre-hearings, and what type of materials come to the board, whether it's a recommendation to the board, or whether it's simply a pre-hearing. So, that, that information has been gathered, and we will have an item for the board's consideration at the April land use meeting.
Excellent. I'm looking forward to that.
Same here. Thank you very much. I see folks looking to comment, but I guess we're going on to the next item, seeing that was passed. All right, we're back to F6.
We're back to F6, correct. And the applicant is available and has a condition to address the buffer entries along the western property line. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Please introduce yourself, and we'll proceed.
Yes, Kami Corbett. This condition that I'm about to read amends condition four, and it was discussed with development services staff and your natural resources staff. What we are proposing is a condition that says the buffer is intended to obscure light generated by the development. To the extent existing trees are removed, including the removal of non-native invasive trees, the trees must be replaced with a similar-sized tree or trees in terms of both height and canopy opacity.
Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. And thank you very much for working on that. That, that eases my concerns. I will also point out that in addition to this 45-foot wide buffer with these extra, the extra text, we did have the, or the applicant has proposed the natural area and the retention pond, and that really, so the general site plan does look to be protecting the drive-in from light pollution in other respects besides this condition. I want to put that on the record in case somebody comes back later looking to do a modification, that these other features, the natural area and the wetlands as well, were part of, at least my look at how this would, as a whole, would protect the drive-in. I am really glad that it notes that the point of that retention, that vegetative preservation area is to protect the drive-in area from light. Because, I mean, I think very well-meaning people could come along years from now in that homeowners association or neighborhood and, and not understand the condition, you know, what, what the reason for this condition is and say, yeah, we could put a trail through here. We could do something else. So, thank you, everyone, for working on that on the fly. And with that, I'll move the item.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith, a second by Commissioner White. Seeing no other discussion, please take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent. Seeing that we don't have any of the other items in the following agenda, unless there's a commissioner item that needs to be raised, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
We are there. Meeting adjourned.